Six oh one. This is a hybrid meeting, which means it's Zoom as well as in person. I'll introduce my colleagues on the board. Sleckman Hull is present.
Good evening.
Sleckman Dr. Segraffas is president and myself, Chairman Campuchino. This is also being live on cable and it's also being recorded and will be uploaded to YouTube. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first scheduled appointment is for six o'clock. It's the fiscal year 2022 tax classification. Who's going to present?
Board of Assessors meeting. In attendance, we have Carol Beauregard, Nancy Gulat, and Dece.
Who's joining us to speak, Mr. Reese? Who's joining us to speak, Mr. Reese, today? Just give her a moment. That's okay.
Sure.
And I think she should be able to hear us. I think she should be able to hear us now. Nancy Gulat, can you hear us?
Mrs. Gulat, can you hear us?
Can you go back to her name up above?
Yep. Yeah, she should be able to hear us and speak now.
Nancy, you with us?
Nope, she keeps going.
So I think because she's participating remotely, when she's ready, she has to state that she's participating remotely.
Right.
Nancy, are you there?
She's muted. Her red button is on, she's muted.
Mrs. Gulat, could you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We got you, Nancy, yes.
Can you hear us? Is that a no? Nancy, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. We can hear you. Okay, who's going to present?
Carol's going to present on new business and classification.
Thank you.
So I'm hoping you all got this package last week to look over where the values are, what your tax rate scenarios would be. Having said that, the last four years, we've used a 1.65 for the tax rate. This past year is 1.66. Sticking, if you stick to the 1.66 tax split, your residential tax rate would be at $14.83 from this past year. It'll go down to $14.29, so a 54, excuse me, cent drop.
Can you look at that for me, Mrs. Beauregard, if you don't mind?
For FY '21, it was at $14.83. FY '22 would be $14.29 with a 54 cent increase.
Thank you.
Commercial, was that $27,035? Go to $26,017 with a decrease of $1.18.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is we have 10% increase in values this year because sales are so high and out of control. If we were at a single tax rate, a single tax rate would be at $15.77. Once this market breaks and we start going back down, I would seriously consider going more towards residential to drop some of your commercial rate. I mean, your commercial's almost double your residential. So just food for thought for the future. So having said that, I have a few scenarios of, you know, different splits that we did. I don't know if you have what, you know, what you want to look at or decide what type of split you want to go with. If, because there's 75 different combinations you could do. So if one of these I printed in advance, I don't have, it can be done two minutes tomorrow morning in the office. I'll just have to have you come in and physically sign it.
So my question is, as a result of our, the budget that we passed last June, we have to, in revenue, we have to raise $19,634.107. Is that correct? And if so, if we stay at the 1.66 rate, we're actually reducing the tax rate, are we going to be able to raise that amount of revenue?
Oh, yeah, that's automatic in here. It's in Gateway, in the system that we use in Gateway, you put what your budget is, your total budget, and then you do these different scenarios so that it automatically calculates your tax rate times your values to get to your revenue.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Oh, I have quite a few.
Sleckman Hull.
Although the voters voted not to fund the $8,000 for the property evaluations, it was, in fact, they found the money. These numbers, do they reflect that evaluation?
No, because from my understanding, that money's coming, I don't know if it's coming from free cash or if it's coming from one of the other funds that already has the money in it.
Correct.
So it wouldn't have any effect of this.
So how can you determine a tax rate and an actual levy based on the fact that you haven't done those property evaluations, knowing fully well with this market that the price of those homes is going to increase significantly?
Because that money for the revow is for fiscal year '23. So that has, that has no bearing on this, on '22.
Now, the number that you used was 10%. Were you anticipating a 10% increase?
On the residential values.
On residential values. And what is that based on? That number?
Prior year sales. So who's that other spreadsheet? The, the sales one. I just want to give you a couple of the same houses. So this is, this is a portion of our spreadsheets that we do to get to values. This one is just for single-family homes. Let me just try to. That's new construction. I gotta find one that's not new construction.
You can pull it up if you want.
Okay, so for instance, on Beaufort Street, this one particular house on Beaufort Street sold for $305,000. We had it valued at the time for $233,000. So when you start compiling all this together, you look at the style of the homes, the year the home was built, all different scenarios, the neighborhood it's in, and you look at the sales versus your current value, and you're like, I, I have houses that sold for $100,000 more than what we had them valued at, and that, that's pretty typical. So once you look at all this and you compile all your spreadsheets, it comes out that your values, your current values, are 10% lower than what houses are selling for. So you go in there and you adjust your cost tables, what we call them, and your cost tables is, do you have a fireplace? Do you have one full bathroom, one half bathroom? So many different scenarios into it, and that's how you get to know where your new values are.
When will this assess, when will this evaluation take place?
When they get the July 1st bill. So, I'm sorry, January 1st bill. Your July bill that we get, July and November's payment, or August and November's payment, that is only based off of what you paid the prior year. We don't have our values, we don't have our tax rates set at that time. And actually, it's a good time to explain this. So now we have our new values, we have our new tax rate, bills get printed for the actuals, which is your February and May payment. So the money that you did not pay on your preliminary bills for your July is now added to your third and fourth quarter. So when you get your tax bill, and it looks like your tax bill went up $500, that's really within four quarters because you're making up on your preliminaries. So when you get your January bill, these values will be on that January bill.
The 10%?
Yes.
So the new evaluations that are going to take place will not impact this fiscal year?
It is this fiscal year. Yeah, this is all the.
When will, have the, have, has an evaluation person or team been hired?
Yes, yes, we have this same person we've had for probably 30-plus years.
And for the record, who is that person?
Richard Kansals.
Thank you.
He's also certified with the DOR.
Thank you. Are you done? Dr. Z.
My question is, so a question that I get a lot of times since I've been on the board, and I think I've even come to you and, and we've sat, because I didn't really know how to explain it or articulate it properly with the expertises. So since I've been on the board, we've lowered the tax rate five out of the six years that I've been here, right? Yet, most people look at their bill and it's more than the last year. So you did partly explain that. Is that the complete explanation for why it looks like more than the, why it is more than the last year?
But you also have to remember, most people also have districts. They can have usually electric and water district, or they have a non-styndia fire district. Excuse me, now, our tax rates, should we go with the 1.66, is going to drop. The electric in the fire is going up because they have a higher budget than they had last year, and they didn't use or did not use as much free cash as they have in the past to lower the tax rate.
Any other questions from the board?
Actually, I have two. The first one is, if the single tax rate were lowered to 15 across the board, what effect would that have on the levy?
None. It would, it would change your tax rate. It does nothing.
The effect?
Your levy is your levy, no matter what you spent at town meeting.
What would, what would that be on the tax rate?
It would, the 15.77 times whatever the value of the.
If it were reduced to $15 per thousand?
I don't understand, I'm losing something.
So it's lower than that for residential? Are you talking only about commercial?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So if it was.
Then it would get passed over to the residential if we lower it on the commercials.
Yeah, it's a.
Correct.
You're always going to raise the same amount of money. It's where you're taking it from, right?
Right. And I understand, you know, because, because there's so much talk about how high the commercial tax rate is, if we can't get businesses in town because of tax rates, that's the only reason why I threw it out there.
Yeah.
Like I said, something to think about for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, would you at this time entertain any questions from the audience?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the board has all the questions answered.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm done.
Yes, anybody from the, well, anybody on, anybody on Zoom wishes to ask a question? Anybody on Zoom wishes to ask a question regarding taxes? I'm going to say no. So anybody? Anybody in the public can come up to the podium, please give your name and your address, and you can ask whatever questions you want.
Everybody sees that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Thank you.
I got one second, Nancy. All right. So like Assessor Gulat is going to participate through my phone, and I'm just going to mute her so we don't get the double audio. Sorry.
Okay, here we go. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, sir.
So Bill Moore, 1835 Smith Street. So we actually answered a couple of my questions already, going over the packet and the information that's in there. And maybe it's a moot point at this point, but I think it alludes to what you were saying, Mr. Segraffas, that, you know, you know, what's the total amount of taxes being raised? I think everything we're talking about tonight is how we distribute this amongst people. But when I, I, one thing I didn't see in this number was what was last year's tax levy? And I, I worked my calculator, and I think the number I came up with was 19.2. And the number we're looking at tonight is 19.6. And one of the biggest questions I have is that says we're raising taxes on citizens of this town, when I recall going to a town meeting recently where we had a vast excess of amount of money coming into our coffers. So my biggest question is, is why the heck are we raising taxes at a point in time when people are struggling and we also have a huge amount of excess available to us? I don't think we should be having a 19.6 number. I think we should be lowering it. I, I think 19.2 sounded like a good number to me. I'm sorry, 19.2 minus like 400, 500,000 at that point. I, I don't understand that. I don't know if anybody can come to answer that question. And one of the other.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Gulat.
Okay, can you hear me through the phone?
I can.
I can hear her through the Zoom.
Both.
Yeah, yeah, we, so how about she participates through audio?
Yeah.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay. The, the question that the gentleman just asked came up last year also. Everything that we have done up to this point tonight, which is the end, is based on what everyone voted at town meetings. Sir, the train has left the station. We have finance committee meetings in the beginning of the calendar year. We work through a budget. We go to town meeting with what we propose to raise and appropriate and/or transfer. Transfer means money from other accounts. That's not raise and appropriate. Now, when we go into the town meeting in June, it's with the understanding, there may have been more requests than we can present to the voters in June. We must go into the June meeting with a balanced budget based on our best estimates. So we do that at the June town meeting. We have a fall town meeting to finalize the budget. And what happens at the fall town meeting is, if there were any requests that were not put on the warrant or were delayed by a vote of the people at town meeting to the fall meeting, it comes up again, a people vote yes or no. Now, the other thing we do at the fall meeting is when we take the votes to put money aside into special accounts, like OPEB, capital, capital stabilization and regular stabilization. So at this point in time, town meeting has acted, there is no time to have a town meeting to reverse anything. This is the end. That's why I told the gentleman a year ago, look, if you really want to be involved, you should start attending finance committee meetings because that's where discussion takes place. Then going into the annual meeting in June, you would know exactly what was going to be presented. But this whole thing follows certain steps. It's fine to think that we have money in stabilization, and we got money in free cash and capital and OPEB, so forth, so on. Some of those accounts are restricted, and the only way you get money out of them is another town meeting, with the exception of OPEB, which is we've not touched at all. But the bottom line is, all of what you are concerned about tonight has been acted on by town people. So we're at the stage now of saying, based upon everything we know, and by the way, by the time we go to the fall town meeting, we know what our free cash is that's been certified by the Department of Revenue. We don't know that in June because the fiscal year hasn't ended. But anyhow, come the fall meeting, when the last vote is taken on a financial item, that's it. That's what the Board of Assessors have to work with, and we have to look at what has been marked and clearly voted, raised and appropriated, and what is going to be transferred from existing funds. That's all done by the voters, sir. I don't know if you attended any of the FinCon meetings or the annual or the special, but we're at the point now, as I said, the train has left the station. We've just got to make the decision and notify the Department of Revenue where we are.
I'm not sure if that answered your question.
If, if I may.
Sure.
So yes, I, I will be taking a much more keen interest in the budget in the future. I was simply raising the point that at last meeting, there was, I believe it was $1.7 million more in taxes that we estimated last year that we didn't need. So I'm questioning whether we need it this year. I started off by saying that perhaps, as Ms. Gulat said, the train has already left the station. So what's left is to debate, you know, how we, how we distribute that and.
So just for your information, at the June meeting, we, the townspeople, 72 residents came to that meeting, and we spent over $23 million in our, in our, for our budget. 72 people, 72 residents came to that meeting. We had our finance committee meetings, we had the Board of Selectmen's meetings, when we went over the budget. We had to reduce up the budget by at least a half a million dollars, I think it was more than that, we had to reduce it. So we, we knew we were limited, so we don't ask for extra money. The, the freak, so-called free cash is money that we budgeted but was not spent. So there were some departments that we budget money for them, and then they don't spend it for whatever reason, and this is why we got that 1.7 million, I believe this past November, it was another 1.2 million maybe we spent, and we, I forget, is it, we have 300,000 or 3?
We have a balance in our, and we have a balance in our available free cash at this point, $424,000, which also includes revenues that come in. Oh, yeah, and talking about like solar payments.
Right, the, and permits.
A whole host of other revenues that came in way over projection.
And we've, we've had a lot of housing, unfortunately, houses both in town, and because of that, permits and everything else, we, we got revenue or we got income for that, so.
May I, may I make one comment?
Sure.
Just piggybacking off what you said, and if you'd like to elaborate because you are the expert on this, but I do agree with some of your points, and I have often asked. We used to have free cash in excess of $2 million when I started, and now it's down to 1.2, 1.5. But that's why we have asked the town administrator, and the board has seemed to be in agreement, to do things like financial projections, to take a look at what things aren't being spent in which budgets, and maybe where we could sort of trim the fat. So I totally agree with you, and I look forward to seeing you at the finance committee meetings.
Thank you very much.
Also, when I joined the board, in my first budget and the second budget, when you see certain departments asking for money, and then they don't spend that money, and it's every year they're asking for it and they don't spend it, we've actually, the board has, I've suggested as well as Dr. Z, Mr. Hull is just recently on the board, so he's been somewhat active in this, and we've asked that those budgets be reduced. You always want some extra money for emergencies, and this is why even in the free cash, we still got 300 and some thousand dollars. If we don't spend it, actually, we'll become free cash for next year. It doesn't mean we have to spend it, but if there's some kind of a situation in town, emergency, we need to spend that money. So you want more money than less money? I, I hear you, though, 1.7 million, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
I want to say there's a town neighbor in us, just a couple of years ago, had $9 million in free cash, which is unbelievable. But I, I think we've been a little bit more cautious, and I welcome anybody to get involved with the FinCon meetings that we have. They're all open to the public, as well as the Board of Selectmen's meetings, where we discuss budgets. We make our own recommendations to the residents and then come to the annual town meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Gulat. She's, she's one of our tax assessors, so.
One of the, of the total amount of money that was in free cash, I believe most of that was local receipts, which includes excise taxes on vehicles. And I see that Ms. Vining, the town accountant, is here. Do you have any idea what the total was that was left, left in the town budget? Do you have that breakdown available?
She's not here, though, is she?
No, she's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom?
She's on Zoom, yes.
Oh. I'm not, I don't want to put her on the spot, but the free cash, it's, it's all broken down.
Yes.
It tells you all the sources it comes from. And yes, we've issued stormwater permits, we've issued building permits, and if it's for a solar farm, it's a large amount of money. The other thing I will say is that over the years, when I was on the finance committee, one of the first things we did was to look at what balances were unexpended in budgets. And if departments didn't spend their money, they face budget reductions that really happened. The other thing I will point out, going into the June meeting, we must be careful not to go, when I say we got to be a balanced budget, we cannot exceed Prop 2 and 1/2. By the time the dust settles in the fall meeting and we know what the people have approved and what we have to do, I can tell you, this town is substantially under the Prop 2 and 1/2 levy. That's an indication of good financial management. I know if you're paying high taxes, you're saying not to me, but I got to tell you, I'm on both sides of this story because I've been FinCon and now I'm an assessor, and I know how it works. And for a town to be as far under the levy limit that we are, that is good financial management, and our audits have repeatedly stated that. We're even recognized for the amount of money that we have been able to put into our OPEB account, many, many cities and towns, regional districts, open an account, and they don't have anything in it. Each year, we try to put something in it. That's good financial management.
Thank you, Mr. Gulat. Dr. Z.
I just wanted to add, to your point, Assessor Gulat, that's part of the reason why the town administrator, one of the first things that I recall you doing when you got here, was reaching out to the Department of Revenue for a financial management review, which was at no cost to the town, which will maybe guide us a certain way on certain financial best practices. So we are doing that as well, and I just wanted to ask the town administrator not to put you on the spot, but we have had discussions about being vastly under the excess levy capacity, so did you want to comment on any of that?
Yeah.
Or Mrs. Beauregard, I'm sorry.
Yep. Yeah, 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 if you want to.
So right now, under the levy or the maximum that we could have raised, where we are with our budget, we are $1,118,108 and change under a max levy.
Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? Please identify yourself, give us your address.
I'm Paul Rouse, 725 Main Street.
What was the last name, please?
Rouse.
Okay.
Sorry, sir.
Thank you very much. One of the questions that I did have was, I'm sorry, if you already answered this, I apologize. Could you please tell me? Um, could you please tell me what year sales data that 10% increase was based on?
Over 21, there were 20 sales.
Okay, so they're based on 2020?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that's, that's one of the things that, um, that I just wanted to point out is, um, that's what, that's what I thought. I thought that they were based on 2020. So I did want to, um, to point out, I, I work in the mortgage industry and I've, um, I've been officer of a couple of financial institutions. So I know how, um, borrow rates impact both residential lending and the institutional side. And, um, one of the things that dramatically impacts, um, home prices that doesn't necessarily get talked about a lot is the, um, the 10-year treasury note. You know, the, the 10-year treasury is what, for the most part, uh, the mortgage industry typically prices their rates against. And when rates are low, obviously it's, you know, simple supply and demand. When, when rates are low, there are more borrowers in the market, which can artificially increase sales. And just as an example, in 2018, the 10-year treasury was at 2.91%, whereas in 2020, the 10-year treasury had an average of 0.89%. Um, so I just want to point out that these assessed values, um, you know, where people's property values go up on paper, which to many people, it's almost just monopoly money. It doesn't actually have any net benefit to them. However, that is based on artif, external, I shouldn't say artificial, but external conditions. It may not always be the case. Um, additionally, where 2021 has still seen an extremely low 10-year treasury at approximately 1.44% as of this time, with Dayton having an average home value of 468,000, which has seen a 16.7% year-over-year increase from 1030, 2020 to 1030, 2021, with most houses in Dayton selling for approximately 3% to 4% over their actual list prices. We've got a 20% potentially swing due to these external factors. So I just wanted to point out, um, that many of these issues that are weighing into the home valuation right now are based on very much temporary conditions. And, um, so I wanted to point that out as a sign of caution, um, when setting these residential rates. And I understand that the rates have been lowered, as, as you said, for the last five out of six years. Um, however, we have seen historically low, unprecedented low, uh, borrow rates, which are artificially impacting these prices, which has caused what could be probably described as a bubble of sorts in the real estate market and where homeowners are paying higher total taxes, regardless of whether the rate goes up or down, if the total levy is increasing, um, due to these, these prices increasing, um, on paper, it doesn't necessarily actually benefit the real people. I just wanted to urge caution, um, in the way that these assessments are being looked at.
Thank you. Dr. Z? Um, I'll ask through you, uh, if it's okay, I wanted to ask you a question. Um, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, is what the gentleman saying that if the, I'm just giving a hypothetical, if the bubble were to burst, the bubble you're speaking of, and we have set the tax rate, then people could be paying, like people's value would actually be lower than whatever that year was telling them that home was assessed at?
Or we, we could go the other way. We could see the, um, the rates continue to go lower, which would dramatically impact house prices the other way.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot of volatility and uncertainty in the way that these, um, these prices are being kind of calculated right now. Um, so I just wanted to point out how many, uh, external factors there are at work in this, uh, in this valuation.
Thank you.
So that was one of my concerns around the, uh, the, is it Gateway is the name of the, is that like a automated valuation model or? Thank you.
Thank you.
Slakman-Hull?
Uh, this question is for Mrs. Beauregard. The spreadsheet you presented only gives a residential factor of one. When you state the minimum factor is 87.625. I was just curious why your spreadsheet stopped at one and did not give us the options and the public the option to look at those other possibilities.
They did. There's a whole, there's a, see that? It's in the, it's in the, um, they were just highlighting.
It's probably on the back of your, it's in your hand, right there.
I think it's in his hand.
They were just highlighting certain figures as like a baseline that we could use to make. They're not saying, I don't think you're saying, you have to pick this or certainly if we could discuss other, we're all here, we could discuss other CIP shifts, um, but they're just giving us a baseline, that's all. But they are there in the packet and it was available to the public well in advance of the meeting as well.
So I, I'm.
No, it's okay.
Fine, thank you.
Anybody else in the public, public wished, uh, to speak? Anybody else on Zoom wishes to speak? Let's see, that's enough. So what does the board wish to do?
Uh, I'm prepared to act, uh, on the, I think it's a recommendation from the Board of Assessors. But if we want to have a discussion, I'm certainly fine with that as well.
I'd be interested in hearing your recommendation and Slakman-Hull's position and my position.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do you want me to make a motion? I'm sorry. I was looking, I'm making sure I have everything.
You want to discuss it for us or you, uh?
Well, I was just gonna.
Make the motion, make the motion.
I was gonna make a motion. I'm not making it yet, but I'm just letting you know. I was just gonna motion to take the 1.66 CIP shift for fiscal year '22, which would be 1429 for residential and 2617 for commercial. Um, but before I make the motion, if we want to have a discussion, I'm happy to do that.
Let's take a discussion. I'll second it.
So that's a motion? You made the motion?
It's a motion.
Any discussion? I'll just say that I support that. I, that was what I was also considering, the 1.66, which is what it was last year.
Mm-hmm. But I, I.
The rate is reduced, so the residents know. And you gave the figures out, but it's gone from 1483 to 1429, yeah, for the, um, industrial, commercial. 2735 to 2617. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, I do agree with the gentleman's comments though, that, um, as we have done in past years, um, the board will continue to take a look at what departments have requested, what has actually been spent, um, and we will be mindful of the taxpayer like we've done every year.
Call for a vote. Slakman-Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z? Aye. And Ken Pacheco's an aye also. So you have the current rate?
And thank you to, um, the assessor. Oh, sorry.
I just need you to sign the LA5 for the tax rate.
Oh, is this just the?
When they done sign anywhere, they'll get all three.
Thank you. I don't want to feel Ken's signature line.
Why don't I get the gavel back?
I promise this last time.
Mr. Hull? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors' meeting at, uh, 6:38.
Uh, second motion?
All right, I'll just go have an empty vote.
You had a vote?
May it be?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. I didn't hear that.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay. Um, who made the motion? Carol?
Eric did.
All right, um, I'll second the motion.
All right, well, Carol seconded, you can third.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
Uh, what time have you got?
6:39.
6:39, huh? Did you call, did you call for a vote and it needs to be roll, uh, a roll call because it's Zoom also?
Yeah, it's a roll call. So Eric, just call Carol's name, my name, and then you vote.
Roll call, okay. Carol Beauregard, Nancy Goulart?
No, you could just.
Aye.
Uh, yeah.
Start, aye. Motion to adjourn, aye. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Your next, uh, agenda item is Todd Pillings, health agent, and Nicole Mello, public health nurse, going to give us a COVID-19 update and updated employee protocols for consideration and approval. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You got a sound guy tonight, do you?
Okay, awesome. Sound okay, Andrew? Can you hear me okay? You don't know. All right. Well, listening on, um, TV on Zoom, it was cutting out in, in a lot on the assessors when they were talking, so.
Dun, dun, dun.
Yeah, we've been having a bandwidth issue with Comcast that we're working through and it is extremely frustrating, but we are working on it. I just want to let everyone know.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand.
Pillings?
Okay, uh, good evening. With me tonight is Nicole Mello, our new town nurse.
Welcome.
So in Dayton, we have over 100 new cases in the last 14 days. These are done from commercial testing facilities such as CVS or your doctor's office, et cetera. There are also dozens of other cases that have been identified in the school test and stay program, but these don't get inputted into the state system. There are also many more people who have been home tested and those results aren't going into Maven either. So Maven is the state system, Massachusetts Epidemiological Network, something like that. Uh, our new nurse has taken over the contact tracing. Roz and I are continuing to assist her as necessary. The increased caseload we're seeing, these number of cases, it's very similar as last year and the trend, if you look at a, in a, in a graph, it's, it's following the same trend about the same time of year. If this pattern stays consistent with last year, the number of cases will continue to rise to approximately the second week after Christmas. This means that people are going to have to be diligent over the holidays and very aware of themselves. Um, if you get any symptoms, it may seem like it's just a cold or allergies or, oh, it's, it's only the flu, it's not COVID. It may be COVID. Um, so there are options if you've been exposed to COVID, isolation or quarantine. Isolation means that you test positive, you go into a 10-day isolation. You need to remove yourself from every other person in your life. Separate bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, laundry. Generally, an in-law apartment or a hotel would be the, the ways to accomplish that. Because those that live in the house with you are being exposed every day to COVID. Now, I know some people can't have that, they don't have that separate bedroom or separate bathroom, so that's considered sharing. So those people are considered in quarantine. Uh, so quarantine is the other option if you've been exposed to a person with COVID. The purpose of quarantine is to make sure you are not near anyone if you test positive. Because when you test positive, you've been contagious for the 48 hours prior. So we liken it to pulling the weeds before they spread. So that's why we ask for the names of people you've been near so that we can get to them and get them in quarantine before they spread it. So if you live in a house with a positive COVID person, you effectively go into a 20-day quarantine, unless you're vaccinated. Quarantine does not apply to vaccinated people so long as they don't have symptoms. If they develop any symptoms, they immediately go into a 10-day isolation. The Dayton Rahova School District is participating in a program called Test and Stay as outlined by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Health Services and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, known as DESI. School administration is unable to be here tonight due to a scheduling conflict, but myself and the town nurse are here to explain the program and answer any questions. Nicole?
So I just want to clarify that the Test and Stay program is not the pooling program that was initially, um, brought to the schools where they were going to have groups of students just randomly get tested for no reason, just to see if maybe that group had COVID even though they weren't showing symptoms or something. Um, this is different. Um, this is something that the parent would sign up for. Um, this is a program that allows the child to stay in school if they've been exposed and are in quarantine, so long as they are not exhibiting any symptoms. Each morning, these children will report to the nurse's office to be tested. If negative, they proceed to class. If positive, obviously they're going to be sent home. This program allows children to participate in after-school activities and sports, but the children are in quarantine in every other aspect of their life. So, um, they can't go to sporting events that were not school-involved, concerts, church, stuff like that. Um, they are not going to, they're just going to school events. Um, for vaccinated children, they are not in quarantine. They do not need to be tested daily. This is due to the CDC regulations. Um, but, and this is extremely important for this, um, in order for the nurses to test the children, they need to sign the, um, the form. Um, they need to completely fill it out. Um, please provide these forms to the schools as soon as you can because they cannot, um, do the Test and Stay until they receive these forms. Um, and they can't take a verbal order over the phone, unfortunately. Um, the program is not a COVID testing site. So one of the, um, issues that they're having is that people are sending their kids to school sick and saying it's okay because when you get to school, you'll be tested. Um, that causes a problem because now this child's been on the bus, this child's had all sorts of interactions and then they get tested and they're positive and it causes a whole bunch of, um, trouble. Even if you do not think it is only a cold, the flu, mono strep, um, these are all communicable diseases. These are still things that kids shouldn't be coming to school with. Um, Todd, you want to take it?
Sure. Um, so I want to give a, a huge thank you and a recognition to the school nurses. Uh, this is escalating very rapidly and they have been taking on the duty of doing this Test and Stay program. There is a company that's coming in doing the testing, but the nurses have to call the parents. They're dealing with all the paperwork and a lot of the paperwork is coming through without signatures on it or without the form being checked off of the box, yes. So it's taking a lot of time out of their regular jobs to do this and they're pouring in a large number of hours beyond their workday to handle a large number of phone calls and questions. They are also doing the contact tracing of the students. So they're the ones that reach out to the classroom to find out who they sat next to at lunch in the classroom. So they're doing half the work for us, for the, the children. If you have any questions, please contact the Board of Health. The nurses are experiencing this huge workload and may not have time to answer questions about isolation or quarantine. In every case that they're following, they review it with either me or the nurse and we follow it all the way through. So the, any, any information is going to be the same coming from either party. So, um, reach out to us first if you can. The Board of Health Office and the town nurse are available for questions, guidance and information. This Test and Stay program that Nicole just mentioned and explained is run by the school, not by the town. If you have any concerns or suggestions for changing the way the program is run, we will be relaying all of your concerns to the school administration tomorrow. Thank you. Does the Board of Public have any questions for either of us at this time?
Does the Board have any questions?
I do. Um, it's, I guess it's a question, maybe a, a suggestion. So under, uh, numbered, on the COVID, sorry, on the COVID-19 return-to-work protocols, um, under procedure.
So I don't think we're there.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay. I thought we were reading that at first. I have no questions on Test and Stay.
Slakman-Hull?
Uh, yes. Etta, I'm not sure, was the last meeting or the meeting before, I asked you, who is ultimately responsible for the COVID programs in the schools? And you told me it was you. Um, is the health agent ultimately the person who makes the decisions in regards to schools?
So as far as the Test and Stay program being implemented, that is a school, decision by the school district. I don't remember exactly what the question was that I referred to.
It was kind of, it was a general question about overseeing the COVID issues of the school district.
Sure. So when they have any issues, they reach out to us. Again, we're following the cases for them. We're the ones that determine what the 10th day is for the kids to come back and that kind of thing. So we're running the contact tracing for them. But they ultimately, this Test and Stay program is theirs, but if they ask a question about having a basketball game or whatever, that's ultimately on the Board of Health. But, um, say the Test and Stay program is, is the school program, which is, DESI is recommending that they follow.
Now, that's going to lead to my second question. That is a recommendation, correct? Not a mandate?
It is a recommendation, not a mandate.
That is correct. So with that in mind, what are the consequences for a parent who refuses to follow the quote-unquote recommendation?
So if, oh, you can probably answer if they don't sign.
If they don't want to do the test to stay, um, and they've had close contact, then that child will need to quarantine, um, and they would miss school. Um, depending on if they want to, they would, there's either a seven-day or 10-day quarantine, depending if they're going to test, but I'm guessing since they don't want to test at school, they may not pick testing otherwise.
Since it is a recommendation and not a mandate, have, has there been any pushback by parents?
Not that we're aware of. Um, and I, I don't know about anyone here, but I don't, not that, no, but I, the nurses haven't come to us and said, so little Johnny's parents don't want him to do it, so he... and said, "Little Johnny's parents don't want him to do it, so he's going to quarantine." There's no little Johnny, just a word on the right page.
Sure. Before this discussion is over, I'm going to be advocating, I'm going to be asking parents that question directly. In regards to what you mentioned earlier about the quarantining for the general population, are those recommendations by DPH or are they mandates?
Quarantining rules are set by the DPH.
So those are mandates?
They are mandates, yes.
And by law, you must enforce those?
It is on the Board of Health to enforce quarantine, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. C?
Yes. I, I don't know if we're going to move on to the COVID protocols, but I think it sounded like there were, are we going to allow parents? And the reason I, the reason I asked this, yes, absolutely. Well, my actual question is, the reason I'm curious is because I don't have a child in the school, so I would just like to know what the concerns are.
So I don't have any questions. As you know, I attended the pandemic task force yesterday and my questions were answered by the members of the task force. I'm going to ask the public if they have anything that they wish to address to the Board of Health. I would just ask that you identify, go to the podium, identify yourself, give us your address and.
Be respectful.
Let's move the microphone.
You forgot to say be respectful.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Latour. I live at 193 Forest Street in North Dayton. I have three kids, one in the elementary school at Dayton Elementary, one at Dayton Middle School and one at the high school. And what you're explaining sounds great on paper, the way that you're saying it, but it's definitely not happening in real life. So let me tell you what happened to my daughter at the high school on Monday. She called me pretty frantically. She said she got pulled out of class. She got put into the COVID room, that I didn't even know that they had a COVID room. And she was told to call me on her own cell phone, not by the nurse, not by the person who was running the program, to call me on her own, tell me that I needed to go down. If I didn't go down there and fill out a paper for her to get tested at school, that she was going to have to come home immediately for 10 days. She would miss school for 10 days, all of her classes. She plays on the basketball team. She would miss all of that kind of stuff. And I asked her if I could just, because I have the home test at my house, I prefer to do it that way. And she said, "No, if you don't consent to what the school says, you have to do it here, then you can't go to school. There's no other way around it." She was very upset. And I just, the whole contact trac, so she got exposed on Friday. Nobody ever called, nobody told me I was close contact. She was out, what, for three days after that because she was, you know, she could have been spreading it to anybody. Nobody ever told me that she was a close contact. And, you know, I have three kids. Between the three of them, in their whole lifetime, they've received 118 vaccines. I'm not against them. The reason why I, we chose not to get this vaccine, just not a lot of safety data for kids. All, my whole family, we've had COVID. We recovered from COVID. We tested positive for the antibodies for COVID. And I don't know of anybody, maybe you could answer this, who has had COVID, recovered from COVID, caught it a second time and spread it to somebody else. I would assume that my daughter is safe not to spread it. Now, another person that she knows, another friend, she's vaccinated. She just tells the guy in the room, like, "Hey, I'm vaccinated." He said, "Go back to class, no problem." Didn't check her vaccine card, didn't do anything like that. That person could potentially be spreading it more than my daughter. I understand you're following guidelines from somewhere. Everybody that we call and talk to says, well, these are the rules, these are the mandates, these are the guidelines and we're just following the rules. You can never talk to anybody who makes the rule. Everybody, everybody says that. We're following the guidelines. The guidelines don't make sense to me. I mean, I don't really, it's, and I, you say you haven't heard any complaints from parents. That's not true. Another thing I'll tell you, the person doing the testing, who I don't know who these people are, they're not nurses. The person told me, I said, "Can you tell me, can you estimate how many kids that you test are actually vaccinated compared to unvaccinated?" He said, "It's half and half. Half the kids that test positive are vaccinated and half the kids that test negative are vaccinated." So I don't really see the logic.
Yes, if you could, if you can.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You've got a lot to say and now.
I know. Kate.
Kate, you bring some valid points with the whole vaccinated, not vaccinated thing. This is a thing that we spoke with the nurses with because it's something that we're kind of all agree with with that we don't care for the fact that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to get tested while the vaccinated kids do because we are seeing vaccinated people get sick.
And spreading it.
And spreading it. So we have brought that point and then they have started to ask if the vaccinated, because we can't change that guideline, but we can ask, hey, would you like to get your vaccinated kid tested because we are seeing them spread it, we are seeing it. So we've tried to address that that way because we're aware that that's an issue. You had another point that I'd like.
How come you have to get tested five days in a row if you're negative? Aren't you negative?
No, because there's an incubation period, so you could be negative and then.
And then the vaccinated kids could also be that way too, right? So do they, do they also have to get tested five days in a row? I don't know. So if you say you're vaccinated, do you get to just go back and then they're done with you? Or do you have to go for five days too?
How it's written, they don't have to do anything, but we, the nurses have agreed that we're seeing cases with them, so they have started to ask the parents if they're vaccinated. Can they do the test to stay? If they agree to it, I was assuming, this is an assumption that I've never been told this, that they were going to do the testing just like the vaccinated kids if they agree to that. But that's an assumption on my part because I never thought to ask that. They were just going to test them that one time or continue like everyone else.
Okay.
So the single, this incubation period she's talking about, and this is why it's a seven-day quarantine is because it usually takes five to seven days before you show up and you were contagious on day three. So your daughter was exposed on Friday, whoever she was exposed to on Friday didn't go for a test till, say, Sunday and got the results on Monday, which is why they pulled her out of class on Mondays because that's when they got the results. There's always a lag, even when we report numbers to them, they're from two days ago. It's, there's a lag between the testing and the reporting and then we get to call you because by the time somebody enters the data, it hits us and then we call. There's always a lag, but that would explain the Friday and Monday thing. Yes, there's a COVID room. Schools have had that since they reopened back in September. They have to have a COVID room. That's where people go while they're waiting or if they've got symptoms, they need to keep them away from everybody else. And the thing is, I mean, could it have been handled a little more delicately? Maybe. I know, unlike, say, the nurses are very overwhelmed with what's going on while trying to do their jobs and deal with this, but.
I know they are.
But that being said, I'm not making excuses for them, I'm just saying that.
Well, can I tell you what happened in the spring before they got the COVID room? When she got exposed to COVID, she literally got kicked out of the school, called me from her cell phone and told me she was on the curb with about 10 other kids, all fending for rides for themselves. So I know everybody's overwhelmed. I know, believe me, I know. The nurse is busy. It's not being handled, it's not very organized. And, oh, also, they told her who the person was, that her contact was, told her the person's name and she said she wasn't even near that person. But I don't even think that person was in school.
Yeah, so again, you're covering a lot of topics and I can't answer them all as fast as you're asking them. So let me back up to when you asked who was doing the testing.
Yeah.
And you said it wasn't nurses. That's true. The company they're using is generally paramedics, I believe, that are coming in after shifts and whatever to do it. But it's an outside company, the CIC, but it's East Coast Medical or something. I don't remember the name. So the person who was, so if you're positive right now, okay, and tomorrow you get sick and you test, I'm going to say to you, "Who are you near?" And you're going to say, "Well, I don't know, my kid or whatever, the people I sat next to, but I don't remember who was next to me in the crowd, but I think I might have been near this person or whatever." Because you don't remember which day necessarily because it's three days ago that I'm asking you about. You may have identified that guy right there as being in close contact, but when we call him, he's going to say, "Well, I wasn't near her."
Yeah.
So you're asking the kids what happened three or four days ago and there might have been a weekend in between. And sometimes, to be cautious on the side of preventative, they'll sometimes pull other kids in that may not have been necessarily there, but we would rather than pull a kid that shouldn't have been quarantined than to leave them there when they should have been. You know what I mean? So I'd rather than err on the side of caution. But normally, within this case, we sort it out and then it gets determined that the person didn't need to be in quarantine. But every case is different. I will just want to respond, you said something about getting COVID twice. Yes, we are seeing people who are getting COVID twice. We are seeing people get COVID for a third time. Yes, it's approximately 50% of the population that's getting COVID is vaccinated and 50% is not. The highest grouping of people that is getting COVID right now is the 40 to 60 age group. The second one is the 0 to 19. Yeah, so it's spreading and yes, whether you're vaccinated or not, you can still transmit COVID.
So it's a little bit discriminatory to separate the kids like that because she felt separated.
Well, this is something a concern we're going to bring to the school administration. We have, every Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM, we have a meeting with all the school nurses, including the Rehoboth nurses and the Rehoboth health agents. And we go over the cases, what's going on, is there a dance coming up this weekend, what's going on? And this topic has been two weeks in a row that's been coming up and the nurses are starting to feel the strain. Our nurse is starting to feel the strain from the number of calls. And so we feel we need to change the direction of their program and it's been a topic of conversation and I believe it's going to be discussed further. And we're going to, again, anything from tonight, we are going to bring to them and see about getting some of the policy tweaked or changed or altered or whatever, where you want to use.
That's good because I just, for me, it feels like we're almost two years into the pandemic now. We have very high vaccination rate in Massachusetts. We've been wearing the masks. We've been doing everything and I've never seen the cases so high. So I don't think what they're doing is working that great.
They are similar to last year, which is, last year, what were we doing? Wearing 500 masks and staying like 900 feet away from each other? And we had very similar numbers to now when we're not doing those things. So something is helping. Deaths are down in hospitalizations. I mean, ultimately, that's what we want. We're not going to get rid of COVID. It's not going to go anywhere. This is just, this is life now. But we want to make sure that people aren't dying. And you're right, like, we keep seeing this. We're going to mention it again when we go with the nurses. But the nurses, they're the ones that brought it up, even though we could see it during contact tracing. I was very happy that they mentioned, "Hey, you know what? I'm not comfortable picking this child and having to test them every day, but not this child when both of them are equally, have the opportunity to spread it." So.
Okay, just one more question. He said something about it not being mandated. So does that mean that you, there's no way to opt out of this?
So school opts into this program. There were two programs that they could opt into. One was the pool testing that Nicole was referring to earlier and the Test and Stay program. So the school is opting to be in that program. So if they chose not to be in that program, every one of these kids would have to be home instead of being at school when they're in quarantine.
So if you don't consent to being tested, they can't go to school?
Correct.
It's rough.
It would be a lot of kids from the numbers that we're seeing.
If they were to test everybody that was in, or, yeah.
If they didn't allow them to do the test to stay to stay in quarantine.
And again, this is a program that came out of DESI and EO, HHS, or whatever I said they were, the Executive Office of Health. So they're feeling that we have to keep the kids in school and the only way to do that is to be testing them regularly and yes, it's an increase in numbers because the kids are at school while they're contagious.
Okay.
And I don't want to just say that's the guidance, but it's.
That's what everybody says.
That is the rules, but we're trying to do the best we can with the rules and, and again, pull the weeds when we can. And, but it does require cooperation between the nurses, the parents, the students and even the outside programs that they're having. You know, you don't go have a party with 50 people all in one room. I mean, obviously, you know, here we space the chairs out and try and maintain it, but there's.
This isn't a potty.
And this isn't a potty, not by a long shot. But yeah, we all have to do a part and ultimately, that's where the state is going, is they want to have basically self policing, if you will, and they're going to eliminate contact tracing and basically you just, it's up to you to go get yourself tested and tell whoever you were near.
Yeah, that's what they should do because teenagers aren't very reliable with this kind of stuff.
It's not just the teenagers. As someone who's talked to a lot of people, it's not just the teenagers. So, but yes, the, that's where they're going. I don't know when it's going to be, but they're talking about, I think they said right now, this is going to run through like January 15th or something like that, so. But I wouldn't be surprised if the state changes the direction we're going in.
Okay.
Thank you. I want to see if the public has any more questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Doug White, 455 Forest Street. So back, I think it was in January, my daughter, who goes to Bishop Fian, we were called for the contact tracing. So you have a list or you know who has tested positive.
Yes.
And you know, from what you're saying here today, that you've got both vaccinated and unvaccinated people who are cases on the rise. And you yourself said that both of those groups are able to pass it from one another. And you both said that those who are vaccinated are not exhibiting the same severity of symptoms that the unvaccinated are.
You're the one that's been talking recently.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So are you seeing that the vaccinated or the unvaccinated are having different symptoms?
I don't see, I don't see as much a difference due to vaccination status. I see more of a difference in regards to age and what other underlying issues they have. That's what I'm seeing personally when I'm looking at the data.
So here's, here's my point about.
At the state level, just one quick point. At the state level, as of yesterday, out of the 1,100 people that are in the hospital with COVID, I think 33% of them are vaccinated people and the other 67% are not.
Okay.
That's not Dayton, that's the state.
That's the state, okay. And from what I hear on the news, it doesn't seem like it would be 33. It would be much lower than that. But my point is, you have to do the contact tracing when somebody comes down positive. So you already know who has already had it. Is the trend for those who have already had it, and you just said 33% in the hospital vaccinated, are you seeing the same trend on those who have already had the virus? And are they falling into the same category as the vaccinated people that are a lower percentage that are actually getting severe illness?
Yeah, no, I know. That's, all right, and let me try and answer it, but I may not be understanding the question correctly, but out of the.
Are the unvaccinated that are only recovered, the recovered group, are they getting the same results when they do contract it a second time? So you got breakthrough cases and recovered people who have it a second time. Are both of those groups experiencing a lower threshold of severe illness?
So our experience here in Dayton, out of the 1,000 people that we've followed that have been positive, I think only two have had COVID before that were hitting them for the second time. One of them was actually a third time, which is really unusual, but.
Just two people?
Two out of 1,000.
Three cases.
Yeah. Out of the vaccinated people who are getting, obviously, we're seeing a lot of people who are vaccinated who are getting it. Right now, it's almost entirely the Delta variant that people are getting, so. But if your question is, is getting COVID better for you than getting the vaccine as far as protection? Is that ultimately what you're asking?
No, I'm just asking, is it the same when, you know, somebody who's recovered, those two people, they didn't become severe and the people who are vaccinated, when they get it, most of them don't become severe. So why would there be a difference between, in the Test and Stay program, between saying that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to get tested, but if you're unvaccinated, you do? Because the question should be, are you vaccinated and have you recovered? And if they're coming into a second case, breakthrough for those who are vaccinated and a second case for those who are recovered, shouldn't they both be considered? You don't have to test?
Well, this is where we've been going with the school nurses and the direction we are going and leaning on administration to alter the policy to try and change it to include or disclude those groups and kind of make it more uniform.
Right, because you're looking at a group of, at an age group where you don't have a lot of severe illness to begin with. And then of the ones that do get severe illness, you know, it's a small number, but when you compare both the vaccinated and the recovered group, both of them don't get severe if they get it. You only said there was only two that you know of that reoccurred.
Yep.
So it doesn't seem fair. So it doesn't seem fair that this person may have recovered and we're gonna have them standing on the curb. And we're gonna have them calling out for their for their parents. And since it's a recommendation, we have control over that part. As a as a as a town or as a school district.
School district, yes.
And I think that when you go and you talk, if you would bring this up, that maybe we should opt out and maybe we should do what we did when, because now you're telling me that it's not the severe type of illness we dealt with a year ago. We may have the same cases, but we're not having the same severe illness. If you're sick, you stay home. We have common sense. So why can't we as a town or a school district, take the part that was mandated, which is the quarantine, which is what you do anyway if you get sick, you just stay home, right? And then the part that's not mandated, the recommendation part, let's tell DESI we're gonna opt out.
Well, again, this is something that the school district is discussing very heavily right now and obviously we will talk, we've been.
Will that be a public meeting and when will that meeting be?
I believe school committee meetings are all.
Yes, they have.
I believe some of us have attended those.
I don't know when it's gonna be on the agenda.
And when they'll take this question up?
It would have to, it's, yeah, we don't follow them. Um they don't like me very much at the school committee, so.
I didn't mind you, you called my house.
So yeah, I don't know when it's going to be.
And you explained, you know, how long we had to be out, you know, and and our whole family had to be out at that time because this was pre- prior to even the vaccination coming out.
So yeah, and unfortunately, I hate to refer to um what she said, but yeah, we're just following the guidance that we're told, so if you.
But that guidance is is recommended, not mandatory.
Well, the quarantine and isolation is mandatory. The school doing test and stay is is optional, yes.
Test and stay is optional. So in that discussion, I hope it's brought up that yes, we should be treating recovered people and vaccinated people the same way if in fact they have a second. You follow what I'm saying?
We do. Well, that was kind of what we were getting at is that it there is a a different treatment for vaccinated and unvaccinated people, so.
Right, but but we we're always we're always like pretending that the recovered don't exist. And they are kind of like vaccinated if only two of your thousand actually had a second case. And one of them had it twice, so that's why we got three. So um yeah, if that could be, you know, ferreted out and we could get to more, you know, life as usual, back to a little bit more normalcy when we had the flu and when we had colds and, you know, you just were a responsible parent and you said, you know, you're not feeling good today, you're staying home.
Well, so what we're seeing a lot of right now is a lot of parents are sending their kids to school while they're sick so that they can get a COVID test at the school instead of taking them to CVS or whatever. So that's not helping.
The other part would be to recommend that they accept the CVS test.
Oh, that was the other thing she said, the home tests.
They weren't accepting that, so if we could put that on the list too.
They are not accepting home tests right now. That's the only test they're not accepting, but they are accepting any of the other tests. But if it it has to be a daily test for them to stay in school, that each day they have to be tested.
Yeah, and that would be difficult. That's what I wanted to address with you.
And sometimes they're out, so, but they're out of the home tests.
But yeah, the the um our home tests are just difficult because we do have to, I wanna trust everyone on that they're telling me the right thing, but um they might not.
But is that part of the mandate or is that part of the recommendation?
That's part of the policy. That that's a a policy of the school.
And the policy is recommended. So that could be amended if it's only recommended, right?
It could be. I don't think they would get away from the home, not allowing home tests.
Just because that doesn't get reported into Maven, so like we can't confirm, it can't be confirmed. That's the only issue with it. But there are some home tests that do get, you do it with someone. I don't really understand it, but that does get.
On a video.
They might be able to put it down.
What about an attestation? You know, I sat there, I saw my kid do it, he was negative. I write it down and I and I send him the result. And if it's positive, I say, yeah, he's positive, here's a result.
Um I I I know where you're going. I and I'll say myself, I would not recommend that we allow home tests because it would just get a little out of control for the the nurses.
Well, it would take the pressure off of them from having to do it all.
Yeah, but they still have to now review the attestation and all the rest of it. And I I personally, I wouldn't recommend it. I would think they need to stay with the the testing at the school.
It seems kind of simple, though. I mean, you'd you'd stand there and you'd watch your kid take the test and then you would just sign off and they would bring that to school and everything's satisfied. One one less thing the nurse has to do that you're saying is overloaded.
Well, you would think it would be very simple when I say, what day did your symptoms start? We never get a straight answer out of anybody and the answer changes tomorrow and it changes when you talk to him and you talk to him. So we can't, it's hard, difficult to get information that is accurate and reliable. And that's why with the school testing, we can confirm the accuracy of it. And that and that's.
Well, something's gotta be done because a family like this can't be going through all of that, you know, which kids don't.
They did allow that last year in the spring. They let us do the test at home and then she took a picture and she like showed it to the nurse.
Right.
Yes, we should be trusted.
Yes, exactly.
Uh again, it's the school policy. I'm just saying I wouldn't recommend the home testing, so.
These are all valid points and I would hope that everyone goes to a school committee meeting because those are the places that this is gonna change. I mean, we can push it as much as we can, but the it's not our, that's not.
Their hands are tied, their hands are tied by DESI. So DESI ties their hands. That's what happens.
And for full disclosure.
They will not get funding if they don't follow DESI's guidelines.
But DESI doesn't say you can't allow home tests. That's a Dayton red.
DESI didn't say that. DESI requires a mask, requires every other policy going on in the school.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Peter Latour, one ninety-three Forest Street. So that's what's going on. So we build a school committee meeting, voice our concerns. We voted against the mask mandates in school this year. And they still, they still proceeded to say, we will not give you funding if you go without a mask mandate. And that happened with a bunch of schools in the Commonwealth. So and DESI goes on their website and say, we have twenty-two hundred schools in Massachusetts that are following our guidelines. I wonder why? Because you won't get forty percent of that funding. So what do you do? What do you do? Go to the school committee meeting? I spoke about the school at another meeting and they didn't do anything about the funding for the school. Even most of our kids, it's like a mass accident out of the middle school.
We're really getting off the subject right now. A lot of these questions should be asked to the school administration. You're sure, the school administration, not, I mean, you can give some guidance as to what's going on, but you don't have all the answers.
We're more of the explanation of what's going on, not the why they are choosing what they're choosing, but.
Yeah, I just was under the impression you're gonna be there at the meeting and you can bring some of these things up that are of concern to us.
Well, again, are we can raise it for, I'm just telling personally, I don't know where Ms. Mello feels, but that I I don't think the home test, if and if it's not validated, i- if it's the one with the video or whatever, then maybe, but the one that you're just saying, oh yeah, here it is. Like I I don't think I could get behind that, so. But that's again, my opinion, so.
Just as an example, I used to be a probation officer. We used to do drug testing. We wouldn't allow them to do the drug test at home and then tell us they're okay, there's no drugs, so that's kind of the same. Why not? I don't know. No, absolutely not. Please. Do you wanna, actually, Tom, you had, you would raise your hand earlier. You wanna come to the microphone, identify yourself and give us your address?
Thank you, Mr. Chan. So I just have a couple of questions and I'll uh I'll be mercifully brief. Tom Galucci, I'm from Palmer Street. First of all, for Mrs. Galucci, absolutely nobody is testing our eleven-year-old autistic non-verbal son. Not happening ever. Secondly, uh my question would be, the testing that's used, is it PCR or is it rapid antigen?
That's a rapid or is it PCR?
I don't know.
Okay, and and that's a valid answer.
We can get back to you on that. I'm sorry that we don't know that.
So what what we're gonna wanna look at.
I'm sure it's rapid because they had the answers very quickly.
Yet they have to send out the PCR, so I'm guessing it's.
Yeah, so what we're gonna want to um look at is the number of cycles if it is a PCR test because as they crank up the number of cycles, we get more false positive readings. That's been uh proven on several occasions, particularly by um one one of the presidents of, I think it was Tanzania last year, who tested a uh a bottle of motor oil, a goat and a papaya, and he gave them false names, false dates of birth, and lo and behold, they all had uh COVID. Uh and it also mistakes COVID two, SARS, all those different uh coronaviruses for COVID nineteen. So we're gonna wanna watch out for that. Uh you mentioned the CIC people that are doing the testing. Are their background checked?
Anyone that was in the school, I believe, has to have.
Corey, Corey checking.
I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent on that, but okay.
It's true.
Okay. Um have there been any flu cases?
Um, oh, I printed that out.
Because my my understanding is there were eighteen hundred last year and and it it strikes me that there were sixty-four million the preceding year, so have there been any flu cases?
There has been. I don't have, I do have the numbers, but I don't have them with.
They don't get reported to the Board of Health. It would just be if the nurses are telling us that, but they don't get reported the way.
Right, because, you know, well, I'll I'll tell you right now, if you blow your nose in the Walgreens parking lot, they lose their minds. Vaccines, adverse reactions, have we seen any?
Well, yes.
Little kids having heart attacks, those kinds of things?
We haven't, I don't think we've, we haven't heard about it.
Okay, because nationally, I'm seeing a lot of that.
Well, nationally, maybe, but in Dayton, we, none of it's come to us, so.
Yeah. Um lastly.
It may have happened, but again, people don't, we wouldn't know about that because vaccines don't get reported to us. We only get reported positive cases, so.
It strikes me that that would be.
But I can go in and look up your name and and if you're there, it'll tell me if you were vaccinated or not, but I have to look for it. The the ones that test positive automatically come into my system, like.
You you can rest assured, there's a bunch of names that aren't gonna be on there. Mine's one of them. Um secondly, mandates versus laws. We we are all aware of the difference of mandates versus laws. This was why I was allowed to, which mighty nice of them, um I was allowed to vote without a mask. I was allowed to uh live my life without a mask all the way during this thing because I was born a free man. I swore an oath to defend this country against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I'm I'm not gonna be muzzled, so that's the long and short of that. In any event, thank you very much for your time and if you could get back to me with that answer, I would love that. Thank you.
You had your hand up. Identify yourself again, give us your address.
Yes, sir. Paul Reynolds, seven twenty-five Main Street. To kind of add, um to reiterate some of the concerns that have been raised by some of the other folks here, um I'd just like to add my voice. I'm I'm the parent, I'm the father of three small children, um one of whom is in Dayton Elementary. The other two will be once they're a little older. Um we hear the term follow the science an awful lot, but to me, based on the way that the response has been rolled out, it's remains unclear whether it's medical science or political science, which we are following. And the inconsistency of the disparate treatment between vaccinated versus unvaccinated students can only be interpreted by me as strategically using the levers of government in order to enforce vaccine compliance. Which to me, that that feels like, you know, we'll call it like it is. And it feels like the way that the vaccinated students, which if you read the literature that comes from the manufacturers, states right on them that there's there's, they have not even collected. I I specifically read Pfizer's where they did not collect any data on whether or not it impacted transmission at the time, which I read the pamphlet that I was given. And given that this response is so tailored around using the levers of government in order to enforce compliance, it feels like where medical science ought to be, reason in search of a conclusion. This feels an awful lot like conclusions in search of reasons. And I don't believe that parents like Kate and like others who have expressed concerns should feel alone. And I just want to express that um this is not an uncommon sentiment, um you know, among parents of small children who are in the schools. And um I just want to express that 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 there's deep concerns around the way that this vaccine policy and the inconsistency of it and the disparate treatment of it does not seem to be, it seems to be disingenuous in its intent, which it seems like it is being offered to the public as a remedy to a problem where in truth, it seems like it's more a um a a mechanism by which to enforce compliance.
Is there anybody else that has a question?
Donna Burdows, Plessin Street. I just have one question. How do you know that this testing is coming, they're not false positives? I worked at a facility where we tested, uh it was pregnancy, it was for drugs. They would swear, no, I didn't do blah, blah, blah. Well, one of the nurses ended up taking the test home, never took an opiate in her life, and she tested positive. I know people that have tested for COVID and they were false positives. So, I mean, all this COVID stuff is showing up. We don't even really know if it's accurate. A lot of people don't have any symptoms. And I just feel that these poor kids, after listening to you, this has got to cause a lot of mental illness, a lot of depression and anxiety. And who would want to be taken out and put into a COVID room? It sounds like communism. It's terrible. So I just feel bad for the kids that they have to go through this. It just doesn't seem right. I know it's not right. Obviously, it's not right. It's ridiculous. And we're following rules from, look at the vaccines. What are they doing? They're doing nothing. They're causing deaths, illness. They're not really helping anybody. People are still getting it and we're listening, they're following the CDC. I mean, it's nonsense. Dr. Pochi is crazy. Nobody should be listening to any of this. He is, he really is. He's a psychopath, but so.
Please address the board and any questions you have about the school.
I'm sorry, I know. That's why I didn't want to get up, but it was mostly, it was mostly the testing that I'd be a little concerned about.
We can respond to that. Um so first of all, the kids, they get tested five days in a row, so obviously the odds of it being five false positives in a row. But if somebody believes they have a false positive, and we actually had one or two this week, they, there is a mechanism to overcome that um by going to get that PCR test. So that's why we believe that it is a rapid test, that they are doing it to school because they get the results right away. But if you get two PCR tests, you can overrule the the negative test.
Do the kids seem nervous when they have to keep going in and having the testing over and over again?
We're not there, so we can't speak on that.
We don't talk to the children.
Parents can tell you how many.
Yeah, we don't talk to the kids, we talk to the adults, so.
I'm glad my kids are out of school. I'd take them out.
I don't know your name, but I saw your hand up. Please identify yourself.
Steven, Main Street. This um this company that they hired, CIC, to help you out, who's paying for the, who's paying for them and how'd they come recommended? Uh where'd they come from?
So the CIC is a a state agency, I think, or whatever. It's the, the company is East Coast something.
I don't know a lot about the company. Um we've, we just met them at a meeting for the first time a week ago.
We don't know who's paying for the tab?
It's, oh, it's coming out of the schools, but I don't know if it's grant or what. I, we don't know. I, we can find out, but.
Yeah, it'd be nice to find out because did they just pull the money out of nowhere? Um this wasn't grand and all of a sudden they have this company coming up and they're they're like riding in and. Yeah, they're they're running in and they're helping you out, but everything comes at a cost.
No, we we understand, but we've never asked who was paying for it because it's making my life easier.
It's the district. It's the district.
It's the district paying for it?
It's not us. It's not the town.
No, I know, but I don't know if it was grant money or if it's whatever, but the school is definitely.
It probably should have been CARES money, but I don't recall them sending us a request for it, so I would assume it's coming out of the district.
I just make sure that there's somebody that's straightforward and, you know, isn't capitalizing on this terrible thing they were going through here.
Sure, so we'll find out and we'll let the selectman know so they can announce it at the next meeting, so.
Please, if you're gonna speak, could you come to the podium, please? You wanna speak?
I'd like to speak.
Thank you.
How you doing? Peter Latour, one ninety-three Forest Street, North Dayton. Um this question's kind of directed at you guys. Who do you get your orders from? Direct, like who, whose orders are you following? CDC, Department of Public Health, who is it?
Yep, so Department of Public Health is who we get our marching orders from.
Orders, recommendations, orders, what is it?
All of the above. Say triple E or whatever, they'll tell us you need to do this or West Nile. COVID, they they tell us what we have to do. For example, the contact tracing is a responsibility of each town and we have to do it, which is why we have a nurse.
Okay.
Um the same thing with any of the other communicable diseases. We have a responsibility as a town and that's why we have a nurse. Um so they are the ones telling us how to enforce quarantine and isolation. Back in the beginning, when we opened the office capacities and the restaurants and all that, that was all came from DPH to us.
Okay, I'm just fa- trying to find out because everybody keeps saying they're following orders. We're following orders, we're following orders. I'm just trying to figure it out.
No, ultimately, my board is my boss, well, both of our bosses.
Okay.
And then the selectman is above them and obviously we have a town administrator also, but I'm not saying he's above them, but I'm.
Well, you've been appointed by the select.
Right, but ultimately, the DPH is the ones that's giving us our marching.
Giving you the order, marching orders. Okay, so my daughter was discriminated against, she was segregated, her rights, her HIPAA rights were violated. Because they should not be asking these kids if they've been vaccinated. That should be directed towards the parents, for sure. They should be calling the parents first to ask them the question. So I'm pretty sure that needs to happen.
Um obviously, I'm writing it down so we can bring it to the.
Yeah, because it's kind of setting you guys up for a nice lawsuit, pretty sure. All right, I know, who wants to be in this mess? I wouldn't want to be in this mess if I were you, right?
I don't enjoy being in it, so.
I get it, I know. Neither do I, not not tonight, not because of what happened. That was twice. First time I let it go. First time I let it go, we called the school, voiced our concerns about them shoving my daughter out into the side of the street. Nothing, literally, treated like a leper, treated like a leper by the staff at the high school. Nothing happened, nobody got reprimanded, nothing. I know, not your pro, not yours. Not yours, you don't know that, but that happened, along with a bunch of our other teammates, and now it happened again. So. It's kind of messed up when it hits home.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I can understand your frustration and all that, and I get it when this, if things need to change, we need to make a change happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
You said that it's not our problem, but it is when it's the kids of Dayton, it is our problem.
So, so thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Now, also, it shows that, how many kids die, have died from COVID?
In Dayton, zero.
No, in the world, in the United States of America.
Six hundred something.
I thought it was three hundred and seventy-seven, something like that, right? Now, the flu, 2018-19, how many people died from the flu that year?
It was almost three hundred.
It was eight hundred and something, children.
The kids that year.
Children, zero to eighteen, let's, so what's happening? Kids aren't getting sick from it, we're still masking them, we're still putting that up. That needs to be, that needs to be brought up too, because that's put out by DESI with the schools. The school administration has to approach DESI with that. For sure, because it's not good for the kids, not to be able to see facial expressions and all of the above, and to be able to communicate. I can't understand what half of you guys are saying with your mask on your face. That's fine, I don't mind that you wear them, I'm not offended by it, but I can't, like, it's a muzzle, it's a muzzled sound.
I hear you, well, maybe they can't hear me, but.
Yeah, yeah, you have a microphone too. But, you know what I mean? So this stuff needs to be addressed.
My mask is over here, so everybody can understand me.
I understand, but like I said, I saw you walk in with it, that's fine, that's your own preference, now you're sitting here. COVID bomb could be going off in here, big trouble.
No, when you're sitting, you're safe.
Come up again?
Yes, Steven Main Street, I just wanted to ask. Has anybody really looked into the HIPAA rules? Because, I mean, my wife, I have three people that are in the medical trade, and HIPAA was such a stringent rule that protected everybody's rights. I mean, you had a point where a person sitting at an office could not talk on the phone for fear that the HIPAA rules would be broken of the person that was standing at the thing. What about the kids? Where are their rights? Does HIPAA start at the age eighteen? Who's, I mean, has anybody checked into why, why this hasn't become a point, a problem?
Yeah, so HIPAA is not generally, I don't say it's not rules that we don't follow, but it's, the understanding of those rules might be a better question for somebody more in the medical field. I'm not in the medical field at all, but.
If you're adhering to these rules and you're basically offending these kids by announcing they have a disease or asking them if they have a disease, you're breaking a kind of a confidentiality thing, where the parent should be involved, for one.
Well, so from, and this is from our end. You take your kid to get tested, I get told your kid is positive, I call you and ask about your kid. I ask for other names, and if we call those other people, which we generally don't, we tell you to tell them if you want, but we can tell them, but we don't mention the name of who it is. That's what we do. If the school is doing something different, that's something we will have a talk with them about.
So when they're in, when they have kids in there that have been tested, the nurses station, whatever, are they segregated so that one can't hear, the other one's medical problems or medical issues?
I haven't been there while they've been doing the testing. I can make a point.
These are all things that should be really looked at, because it is a very stringent rule that everybody has to adhere to in the medical trade.
Yeah, I'll make a point of going over there while they're doing the testing, so I can see for myself how they're doing it, because I don't know, I've never been there while they've done it.
I'm just asking this question because I've been through it with my wife and my two daughters, or everybody's in the medical trade, and HIPAA just seems like it's thrown out the window now.
No, you're making a valid point.
They're trying, they're trying to do that.
Is there, I just, can I make a comment about HIPAA?
Yes.
I work in this field, I just wanted to add, it doesn't just apply to people in the medical field, you're right. It applies to everybody, regardless of your profession. It's a protection that was, I think, established by the federal government to protect people's medical rights. I'm not making a comment about whether I think something was violated, I certainly don't know the particulars, nor should I, but I did just want to make that clarification.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom have any questions, public input? Anybody, anybody else here? If not, Dr. Z, you raise your hand. You want to come up again, please?
No, he didn't come up yet, not on this topic.
Well, it's still coming up again.
Very quickly, Bill Moore, Smith Street. I just wanted to comment more so that I'm blessed enough to be able to send my daughter to a private school. And in a private school, there are no masks, there's no testing, there's no vaccination checks, literally zero. None of this, this is, this is an appalling story. And government is just crushing down on these people. And I know it's anecdotal, but my school, over a hundred kids, no issues, none. There's been a couple of COVID cases, kids got sick, they stayed home, they tested positive, they got better. All done, that's it. That's just my comment, thank you.
Dr. Z?
I have two quick questions. My first question is, because I don't think we got to the bottom of this answer. So test and stay is an opt-in program, the school district made the decision to opt in. But who made that decision? Was that discussed? I also do not follow them. Was that decision made by the school committee, or was that a decision that came from the central office? I'm asking anybody in this room who is aware.
Yeah, we were not involved in that decision, so I don't know who exactly.
I would, I would think it would come from the school committee. My other, it's more of a comment, but also a concern. You know, I pride myself having been in scientific research for eleven years, knowing a couple of things about viruses. But I also know that vaccinated people and unvaccinated people can contract, as we've discussed, and spread the virus. So I would like to make the comment that I am concerned that the policy is not treating both sectors the same way. And what we're hearing tonight, and I'm not playing to the crowd, I'm making a statement about how you get the public to have confidence in policies is when they're fairly and equitably distributed across the board. So because this test and stay program, I guess we'll call it, maybe it's not a policy, is not being fairly or equitably applied across the board, and it doesn't seem like, and I'm not making your value judgments, I'm sharing, and I'm not sharing your value judgments about why it's not being fairly or equitably applied, but it does fray at the confidence that the public has in the actual program itself. So I would like to see, and I know you're not, both are not in charge of it, but I would like to see that tidied up and addressed, because it's not, that particular part is not based on science.
We completely agree. I mean, even when I do contact tracing, I leave there not feeling so great because I feel like I told some people to quarantine, and then other people are not, and potentially, they're just going all around town, infecting people, and I told them to do that. I mean, I don't, I didn't tell, go back to people, but, I mean, so, and I feel the same way with this. We're telling some kids, you have to do this, and some do that, and there's actually nothing to back it. And you're right, it gives people a false sense of, this is why we are where we are, because we're not using what we're learning.
Or to go a step further to Mr. Latour's point, it's nice to see you again, it almost seems arbitrary and punitive, in a way, to the unvaccinated people. And I am vaccinated, I would encourage everybody to, but I respect that it's your choice. But those are my comments about it. I would like to see that be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pilling? I have a series of questions, and I want you to understand first and foremost that this is not criticism of you or the Board of Health. This is actually extending a full support. And I think when I hear terms like arbitrary and capricious, see the number of people sitting in this room tonight expressing their frustration that we're looking for clarity, we're looking for leadership, and we're looking to transparency. And I, I'm not speaking for my brothers on the board, I'm turning to you for those. I have attended school committee meetings where they had a discussion. And I think by the presence and the questions and the concerns of the people here this evening, and also what I saw on multiple social media points of the concerns of many people who are not here this evening. This town needs leadership from someone, because it's not coming from the school department. Now, I have a number of questions. I have worked in the health field since HIPAA was created. I understand the consequences of violating HIPAA. Not only termination from employment, but also I can be personally sued. Do you have a list of all vaccinated residents in the town of Dayton?
I don't have a list, no.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I've heard something that I find very incredible. The nurses in the Dayton Rehoboth, well, the Dayton school system, rely on the truthfulness of the students in determining their level of risk. Is that correct?
I don't know the level of risk, but who they've been near is what they're relying on.
Right, so that's kind of an inconsistent policy to enforce, because what happens is if I'm not truthful to you, I stay in school. But if I'm truthful for you, I could end up in the COVID room.
That's the general problem that we face on a daily basis. But let me just say that the little kids, they have like assigned seating charts and stuff like that, and so we can track that better. When they get to the high school, they can move around in classrooms and everything else more, and they have more freedom, so them, we have to ask them who they've been near.
Is the COVID room a policy voted by, mandated by Department of Elementary and Secondary yet?
I believe so, yes. That, this was a while ago when they did it, and I remember having to go in and inspect to make sure every school had a COVID room, so yes.
We've heard a lot of inconsistencies. We've heard that there's been potential HIPAA violations. We've heard the term arbitrary and capricious, all legal terms. Earlier, I asked about your role in overseeing the school department, and you represent the town of Dayton. My question becomes, what is the liability to the town of Dayton for an inconsistent enforcement by the schools of recommendations in many instances, not rule of law?
I do not know that answer, and I don't know if I'd want to even begin to try and answer that question.
Is there something that we can do as members of the Board of Selectmen to help you get your point across that this can't continue? That there needs to be leadership, there needs to be clarity, and there needs to be reassurance to all the parents in the Dayton school district that their rights will not be infringed upon, and they will be treated fairly.
I would assume maybe writing a letter to them or going to their meetings? I don't know what else you can do beyond that, from my perspective, I don't know what else. Because we scream it from the rooftops when we're in our meetings, but but we're not in a position of leadership in the town, so.
Would it be appropriate to ask Town Administrator Mullin, working with the chairman or the board in general, to create a letter of concern to the school department?
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I, there were a lot of valid comments made tonight. I think it needs to be, the school administration needs to hear these comments. I'm not sure it should be coming from the board or the town administrator. I understand their concerns, if there's violation, there's some HIPAA violations, by all means, that has to be addressed, contact an attorney or whatever, but I'm not sure how much we or a town administrator should get involved in that. I think people need to go to these school committee meetings, they have public input, you're able to speak your mind, let them express your concerns. But I'm not sure that we should be taking a vote on this. Selectmen, Sir Office?
So I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm going to respectfully disagree with you on this one thing, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with you on the point that we, the Board of Selectmen, were not elected to deal with the day-to-day operations of the schools. I don't, I think we all agree with that. But what I also think is that we were elected to represent the people. So, again, I'm not advocating that we micromanage or follow them around at their meetings. What I, what I would support, I guess is what I'm saying, it is not on the agenda tonight, would be some kind of correspondence, if the board were amenable, outlining the concerns that we heard tonight. I'm not saying that the board has to agree with everything that everybody has said, but I do think it's our duty to pass that message along. And I do think when it comes from a Board of Selectmen, or I like to think anyway, maybe I, maybe I'm not in touch, but I like to think it carries a certain breadth and weight with it. And maybe more likely, although elected officials should always be responsive to their constituents, regardless of another board entering into the fray, so to speak. But I do think it's perfectly appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to pass along the concerns of residents, but also, if the board shares those concerns, to also pass them along coming from the board in agreement with what we've heard tonight.
Dr. Z, I'm not sure if you want to put that in the form of a motion, or I will.
However you want to do it.
I'm sorry?
However you want to do it.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to present a motion that Town Administrator Mullin, on behalf of the Dayton Board of Selectmen, vote, I'm sorry, to send a letter of concern to the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District in regards to the application of COVID-19 policies of the district. And that letter include that Mr. Todd Pilling, as a Board of Health agent, will take the lead in helping to resolve these concerns.
Friendly amendment? I'm gonna, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, not just the health agent, but also with input from the public health nurse as well.
So, so the Board of Health, Dayton Board of Health?
I will second that.
Any discussion?
So I just have a question, I can, I just have a question in terms of all the health agents and the public health nurses. Like, I work for them all the time, so I don't. Can I have any issue, but what is their role in this?
I just want to make sure I understand.
What is that, what? What is their role in this?
Mr. Pilling has.
I just want to make sure I understand the intent here.
Mr. Pilling has stated that he not only works with the school department, but in many instances, by law, has the right to implement policies and procedures for the best interest of the public. Whether they be students, teachers, or the general public that comes in and out of those buildings.
In this, may I ask a question?
Yes.
In this particular matter, because it was some, I'm sort of asking for clarification, because it was something opted into, probably by the school committee, I don't, I'm not sure that Mr., I don't want to set up an expectation
Yeah, that's what I.
that Mr. Pilling can, can just go into the school, kick the door in and change, change that, which maybe we would like, but I don't think that's possible, so I just want to say. So I just want to set up a realistic expectation for what's going to happen.
Dr. Z, when I said that, I am somewhat aware, not specifically, but I know that the duties of the Board of Health Agent are specifically defined by mass general laws. And the duties and powers that Mr. Pilling has spelled out by statute. And I'm sure he is wise enough to know what he can and can't do.
I still second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
I'm okay with this as long as we're talking about their concerns.
The test and state concerns.
Taking a position one way or the other. If there's a violation of HIPAA, somebody's got to address that. I mean, that's-
Correct. And it needs to be corrected.
It needs to be corrected, but that's, we want to just say that these are the concerns that we, that the residents of Dayton brought to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health's attention. And either by the minutes or by contact or conversations with the Todd Pillings or Nicole Mello, you can come up with the letter.
I don't have a problem with that.
Does the Board have to approve that letter before we send out?
So Dr. Azar is logging on.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, we still got pending the motion, so.
Well, let's hear before we vote.
Yeah, I don't want to vote on it.
So he's on, Chairman, I think he would just, I think he would just, I think he would just need to be invited to speak if that's what you wanted.
Yes, it's just that he's, he just joined now, so he's missed the whole, am I correct? He's probably missed the whole cut. Dr. Azar. Dr. Azar, could you unmute yourself?
I mean, I have no problems giving him a call tomorrow and filling in on everything that happened tonight. You know, told him to watch the video.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, my phone's lighting up like a Christmas tree. Seems like Mr. Hall's still attacking the school department. What's going on, guys?
Well, that's not, that's not actually what's going on. We're having a conversation with our Board of Health Agent as well as our public health nurse. And we've invited the public to make comments. And they've expressed some concerns that they had with the school administration as to where they're handling COVID. So I'm sure you probably missed all of that if you've just joined us. So I'm not sure how we can, how you can invest anything for us since you weren't present. But do you want to?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, obviously, there's what, an hour, an hour and a half worth of information here? I think Dr. Azar needs to watch the video. And Nicole, I can have a conversation with him tomorrow and bring him up to speed. And I think it would be more appropriate that he weigh in with some kind of statement or whatever at the next meeting. Because obviously, he can't effectuate the change tonight either. He needs to bring it to people who can. So I can fill him in tomorrow unless he wants to hear it all now, but it's going to take a while.
I'm not sure if you heard Todd Pilling's, our health agent?
Well, I think I'm only on right now because of people who are concerned about, you know, discussions about the school district, school department, and not being invited. Or is this just like, you know, like a discussion that emanated out of something? Or were we invited tonight? Were we supposed to be there? I'm only, I'm only responding because of-
I want to have our Town Administrator address that question.
So, hey, Dr. Azar, it's Mike and Mullen. So when we spoke, so when we spoke-
He said he can't hear you. His microphone here, maybe.
So, Dr. Azar, it's Mike and Mullen. When we spoke on Monday morning, I gave you a heads up about this and I invited you. I saw like, so yeah, so at that point, you said you had a conflict and asked me to talk to Ms. Don you? So I called her and I had a conversation with her on Monday morning.
It's my understanding that she could not attend also tonight, that it conflicted with her schedule.
Well, it was only during Monday, Monday morning, which Mike had shared with us. And I didn't, I didn't know if it was going to be some kind of inquisition going on. But basically, I said to Mike that we would be more than happy to present to the Board what steps we take because we're in lockstep with the local Board of Health in both Dayton and Rehoboth. And if anyone has concerns, parents, they have an open door, I have an open door policy that if anyone's concerned about what it is or how it is or what we do, they should take it up with either me personally, the nurse at the particular buildings. These individuals are putting in yeoman hours trying to maintain the safety of our students day in and day out. And to be, you know, just excoriated based upon what people are hearing tonight. That is just unfair. That is just strictly unfair. To the nurses, to the staff at the two schools, of the three schools that Dayton represents, up till now, yeah, there's some bumps in the road. Some parents have concerns, that's fine. And they should have concerns, we all have concerns. We're still in a pandemic, so there's going to be concerns. But my, I mean, today, our nurses meet regularly. We have open communications with Todd and Rosalyn. So, yeah, I'd be, I'm all ass. What's the concern? What is it that the school district is doing that is not in the best interest of the kids? I would love to hear that.
Superintendent Azar, I resent the fact that you call this an inquisition. We have residents in town that have concerns. We may not all agree with their concerns, but they have concerns and they have a right to voice their opinions to the Board of Selectmen. I've asked them-
Yes, they do.
I've asked them to go to the next school committee meeting and express their concerns to the school committee and the school administration. But this was not an inquisition. You were invited, as well as others were invited. You had a conflict, I get that. But people, the residents of town, this town have a right to ask questions and express their concerns. So I clearly resent that, that it's an inquisition.
I, Kenny, I apologize for the word inquisition. My apologies, I'm just going off of what my, my phone is lighting up. In particular, Board of Selectmen, Lenny Hall's comments. That's what I'm directing it to, not to the people of Dayton. We've always had good relationships. I don't want to spoil that or ruin that. But I just want to make sure that folks there realize that the invitation was given to us Monday. I shared with Mike that I was not available because Kristin Donu is our COVID-19 liaison to the Board of Health and to the district. And I said to Mike, we'd be more than happy for him to reach out to Kristin Donu to give a presentation along with our local nurses in conjunction with maybe Todd and Rosalyn to share with the Board of Selectmen what steps and what it is that we're doing. But I didn't realize that there would be negativity, you know, coming from one of the Board of Selectmen tonight. I thought maybe it would just be a listening thing for the Board of Selectmen to take under advisement. And I appreciate you directing them to the school committee and to the administration. So my apologies to the Board overall for that. I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak right now. But I'm just very curious to know, you know, what those concerns are. We are following the guidance, we are working with the local Board of Health. And if there's specifics to a family that has concerns, by all means, the mechanisms are all in place to reach out, to data. I have not heard of what the concerns are of the parents. And I'm available, people know where I live, people know how to reach out to me. So that's, you know, I was asked to join the conversation by a couple of our school committee members. That's why I tuned in. Otherwise, I didn't think there was a sense of urgency for me to even be involved right now. So my apologies, Ken, for the word inquisition. But the what, what the people were sharing with me was, you know, it seemed like Mr. Hall had an open forum to denigrate the school district. And that's not something we should stand for. So, thank you.
So, just as you were getting into this meeting here on Zoom, there's a motion on the floor that we're asking our Town Administrator to send a letter to you after consultation with the Board of Health and a public health nurse with the concerns that people have expressed tonight. Now, we're not going to get into names of people or anything like that, but we're going to have a letter sent to you and the school administration as, well, if it's voted on, expressing the concerns of the residents in town. As far as anything that Selectman Hall has said, I'm not going to, I may not always agree with him, but I'm not going to stop him from saying what he feels he needs to say.
And he was respectful and professional.
Yes. Selectman Hall.
Mr. Chairman, a motion was made to send a letter of concern to the school department. And we asked Mr. Pilling as part of that motion to discuss those concerns with the school department. At this time, I ask to move the motion.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm going to call for a vote, be a roll call vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye.
So, Mr. Azar, Dr. Azar, I'll be reaching out to you tomorrow and I'll fill you in on what happened and what the concerns are of the public, and then we can go from there.
Sounds good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is the discussion in voting on the updated employee protocols for consideration improvement.
We didn't get there yet.
We're getting there now. So you've all had an opportunity to read it?
Yes.
Do you want to add anything to this, Mr. Pillings?
No, I just want to say that Mrs. Mello and I were both part of the discussion and we had edits that were of a concern to us for how things would go. And those have been incorporated in there. But I will say for the last 18 months, 19, whatever, however long it's been now, that there's been a lot of cases where people have had questions whether or not they should be in isolation, quarantine, et cetera. And we've guided them all through. And I think there's probably even some of them in the room that we've dealt with. But it's, you know, they, we did it in a way that was protective of their rights and was able to move it along. And so I think this policy will maintain that.
Thank you. Selectman Hall.
The only concern that I have, and I'm going to assume since no one from, no union representation is here this evening. The union has reviewed this policy, protocol?
Yeah, yeah, like we sent, we actually had, as of about 6:00 o'clock last night, we had an update. It was sent to our unions then. And then around 12:00 o'clock today, when we made additional updates, we sent, like, actually an updated version out. But as a result, like of the email we sent out to the unions last night, like actually with one of our unions, we had a meeting with them this morning. I would, I would, like in terms of the updated protocols. So in terms, so in terms of the updated language that came from that meeting.
So, based on the fact that no one is here, you have not received any correspondence of any objections?
I know, no, like, and we heard feedback and we incorporated that feedback into the updated protocols as well.
You updated the protocol based on those conversations?
Okay. So I'm going to take that as affirmation that they support this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's how I understand it, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. My only, I'm not sure it's a question or more of a comment suggestion. Under Procedure 2A, an employee must isolate if they have tested positive for COVID-19 until they can no longer spread the virus. This isolation period lasts for at least 10 days. I don't, I'm fine with that. My only, I guess, question is, who, what, who will be, like, making sure that the employee doesn't return before the 10 days?
So like if, like if you go to the top of the second page, like it says, our criteria listed above are for employees who have tested positive for COVID and all those experience and symptoms shall be reported to the health agent and the Department of Health.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Any other questions about protocol? I'll entertain a vote, a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we got to have a motion before we vote.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the updated coronavirus slash COVID-19 return to work protocols.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
As presented this evening.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking it out.
So, Mr. Joyce, it must be 6:40 then, because-
Yes, we're right on time.
May I just make one quick statement before we go? I just want to let everybody know, public everywhere, the Board of Health Office, call if you got any concerns, email. We'll get them to the appropriate people, we'll get the right answers at any time. And I'm looking forward to getting some of that $4 million grant the state put out last week about contact tracing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Very much, and the questions that the public asked. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we did the best we could, but it's not our policy, so it's-
No, but I appreciate the fact that you were here to let the public know what the school's policy was.
Sure. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joyce, could we have the microphone moved to the podium, please? This one here?
Oh, yes.
Actually, it should have been that one there, that one there.
It won't reach the additional microphones, they're actually coming Friday.
Oh, great, finally.
Hey, Mike, how are you? Thank you so much.
No, not at all, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for being patient.
Thank you, thank you, Selectman.
So, Mr. Joyce is here from the Dayton Power. And we've had some concerns from residents regarding noise and odor and stuff like that. Just if you could give us an update as to what's going on with the power plant?
Yes, sir. First of all, there is no public safety concerns that go out to the facility. And just for my name, Michael Joyce, I'm the plant manager at Dayton Power. The facility's been operating since July of 1991. I was with the facility during construction, so, and been part of the town of Dayton. We're very proud to be part of, having the plant in the town of Dayton. So what happened is we had a valve that did not operate properly. So, of course, we have a gas turbine that produces heat, and we use that heat to run a steam turbine. During normal startup, shut up, startups or shutdowns, or through any kind of variation events from ISO new England that does to us to the plant, we have a valve that opens up and allows all the steam to dump to the air cool cadet. So it's almost like a big radiator and collects all that water and puts it back into the system. What happened with this, the valve did not open correctly. And we lifted what they call boiler safeties, which the boiler is under the National Board, designed under the National Board of Mass General Law. So what happened is when those open up, it's like a tea kettle. The steam has to go somewhere and is forced to a small opening. And that's where you heard the popping sound because the safety valves are set for a certain pressure. So that's why they were opening, closing, opening, closing. So it is the design of the facility. It is a safety factor design of the facility and it operated correctly and as per design. So, and that is the noise that the residents in the area heard impacting that, you know, that they were concerned about, from my understanding. So that was the noise. There is steam escaping and being released from the boilers to lower the pressure in the boiler because the valve that we normally use to operate during normal operations did not open properly that day.
Thank you for that. I can tell you, I don't live too far from the Dayton Power Plant. I haven't heard any of this. Could be my age, but I haven't heard any of this. But people in Rehoboth have heard some of the noise and stuff like that, so what I've seen on social media. Selectman Hall?
We have a very good public robocall system. I was just wondering, and I'm not sure of the legalities of sharing that information or if it might be a simple case of the power plant putting together a message, public PSA, that's turned over to the administrator who sends the robocalls out to the town, that when there is an incident, no matter how minor, how serious, your PR people could draw up this, communicate and have it put on a robo and just send it out to all the people. And then this way, they know. When people hear something and they don't know, they think the worst, especially if it's a gas plant. But if a message goes out, it relieves all the fear. Oh, okay, things happen. And they'll understand that. But not knowing creates a little bit of panic and concern. and they'll understand that. But not knowing creates a little bit of panic and concern, and a lot of phone calls to us and town hall.
And all this, I know the chief has, we do have a process in place where we do call the dispatcher at the town police, a non-emergency number, to let them know if there's any noise coming from the plant or any abnormal situations at the plant, and we've worked with Chief Maguire of the fire department also, so.
I was just wondering, though, Mr. Mullen, if we could take it a step further. I mean, it's nice that they notified the police and fire, but the police and fire don't have the capability to notify everybody in the town.
Getting that information out to everybody.
So, I'm just wondering if, you know, who is the administrator of the public service system?
Uh, uh, so for the code, uh, so for the code red system, it's actually the emerg, uh, it's actually the emergency prep, I mean, it's actually, it's actually emergency prep, and the health agent is the only one at this point who has access. Uh, yeah, who has... So, has access and is able to send the information out. I can, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, actually, we believe in the next few weeks, emergency prep will... Uh, so in the next, uh, so in the next few weeks, we believe emergency prep will have, like, a meeting... I still want to talk about, like, updates. So, to talk about updates on all this.
Nope.
I'd like to hear from the chief, though, because I know he wants to speak on this. Give me answer your question, so.
I just wanted to say someone else, Sleckman Hull, he made a comment about the police and fire, no. But I have to say, the power plant, every time something happens down there, like that situation, they call dispatch right away, because, yes, we were getting tons of calls on it, but they notify us right away that the public is not in any hazard or anything. Everything's fine, nothing, you know, there's nothing wrong. Yeah, you got a good point about that, about letting the public know, that's... But like, TA Mullen said, that we have that code red, maybe something we can, maybe work with the power plant and get something out there if they're going to be tested or whatever they're going to do there, you know?
Who in administration is authorized to reach out to Todd to put an announcement out? Is it just the three of you? The fire chief, police chief, and yourself?
Yeah, yes, yes, as of right now, yes, it's really the three of us.
Yes, and I think the board of health is too.
Yeah, yeah, the board of health and health, that's all one of the things, yeah.
Okay. So, I'm sure we could streamline that quite easily.
So, I would...
Mr. Pillings just walked in.
I would not be in support of using this, code red. Sorry, I'm talking, Todd. I would not be in support of using this, because it's an, it's a thing you use in emergencies. This is not an actual emergency. We want whoever is notified to put it out there, not via code red, that it's not an emergency. If they start getting these notifications from code red about non-emergencies, there's nothing to worry about at Dyton Power, then they may not check them in an actual emergency. So, I'm not for this.
And not code red. And I believe Todd, Todd can back me on this. I believe that we, the people that have the authority to put something out, I think there's certain things that we only can use code red for. And like you said, Dr. Z, that is not one of them that's been put in place that we can use it for something like that right now. So, so I agree with you on that one, but I know there's certain things that we sat, when we sat down, we talked about, okay, this is what we're going to use for, for this code red.
Sure.
And there's so many things that you can put out when, when something has to go out.
So, what I would prefer, and I have not, certainly not reached out to her to discuss the logistics, but state, my understanding is, State Representative Haddad has a robocall system that can be used to call landlines. That, to me, would be, and I do not know the logistics, I'm sorry if you're watching, Rep. Haddad, I have not discussed this with you. I think that's more appropriate than code red, which doesn't even sound like is an option.
And we, and we have in the past used State Representative Pat Haddad on this robocall. In fact, it was, had the wrong information when it went out.
We'll get it right this time.
We'll get it right this time. Sleckman Hull?
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Does the town, besides code red, have a robocall system?
No, not that I'm aware of it. So, no, like, it's only code red, and then we supplement it with Facebook in our website as well, like, and the PD has a Facebook, which is very active. I... Uh, I actually see that as an opportunity here from the DPD, but...
In, in line with that, is, you know, we begin in December or to work on budget. Could we also look into the cost of extending the robo system? I mean, Mrs., Pat Haddad has been a huge supporter of the town of Dyton, but I'm sure Mrs. Haddad has other responsibilities as well.
If I may, I missed part of the...
Mr. Pillings?
...screening out state, oh, maybe they need me for this. So, the code red system does have an all-call, where I can call, well, I, I'm one of the unauthorized users for it, that we can send out a call to every phone that is within the Dyton Town limits, cell phone, radio phone, whatever. We can call every single phone instantaneously. We obviously haven't used it yet. We used it for the notifications that people have signed up for. And we try to be very sparing with it, as the chief said. We start hitting people with all sorts of stuff, they're going to stop listening. And so, the committee decided on certain things that it could be used for. Obviously, if there's a meltdown at a power plant, that's something that we would use the all-call for. But if it's just some noise that it's making, is not what we are planning on using it for. So, the committee would have to decide otherwise. But the, the red, code red is an all-call, just it's not a robocall kind of thing, I guess, but it's...
So, I...
I mean, one of the things that I'm hoping will come out of this meeting is a way to enhance our communication to the public on any concern. If they don't meet the criteria of code red, whether it be Facebook or whether it be we look into how much it would cost for us to have our own robocall. Because one of the things that I've found, different committees, when they're having their annual or their fall meeting, is the lack of awareness of when meetings are held. And if we had our own robocall system, we could, you know, whether it be a public forum for an issue such as the BP project that's coming up, or it be the Water District is having one of their annual meetings or semi-annual meeting, it would be a general help to the public in a way of getting, definitely, because not everyone listens to Facebook or watches, you know, checks out Facebook.
So, I wanted to go back to Rep. Haddad. It is not Rep. Haddad who physically sets up the robocall. It's her chief of staff, so it's not a lot of work, and it's certainly not her who's doing it. It would go through her staff, and they could set it up. And I think in the interim, and I am happy to have that conversation, and depending on cost, I would probably be, you like that, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, I would probably be supportive to having that robocall system, because I do see the value in it, certainly. I mean, it would be an expansion of, like, our email subscriber list where, but there you have to sign up, and only 700 people in a town of 8,000-something have signed up, so we are not reaching everybody. So, I do agree with you, but I think till we have that instituted, that we need to figure out something in the interim. And the only reason I brought up Rep. Haddad's office as the temporary solution is just because that system already exists. It would just be us using it, yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
So, Mr. Joyce, getting back to you, getting back to you. Is it complete, then? Is that all? Are we still going to continue to hear some noise?
It, it depends. It depends if that, if we ever have a problem with that valve again.
But it's been, right now, it's been re...
It's been repaired. As you know, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event that we've had at the site. The site is a very quiet facility. We don't make any, any noise really out of the facility. Only I would also mention, we work 24/7. So, if something was to happen, it could be in the middle of the night, could be two in the morning, could be on Christmas, could be at any, any stage or event, just like an emergency. But once again, it's, uh, there's no, no, other than the noise, I know minimize that in any ways, but it's a noise issue. It's not any, any concern for public safety, and I agree, you know, you like to get the message out so people understand what's going on in the community. Uh, but for us, you know, we, we do the best we can, but once again, there are some factors that could affect that isolating could trip us offline, and the valve doesn't open up correctly, or makes a little extra noise than what we're used to and, and go that direction. So, uh, but that's, that's just an overview of, you know, what we can do. But the valve is fixed, you know, well, it is stuck, so we've worked on the valve. The valve is operational, again, as far as we know, fully operational. Like anything, it's a piece of equipment, so.
Don't you annually, though, do this? The noise, and doesn't it happen like once a year that you, you go through the process, you check in everything, and then...
Yeah, we just came out of a major outage, and we do that about every five to six years, where it was the letter I sent to the Sleckman and to the fire and the police departments to make them aware of it. Uh, and during that time, we have to test the equipment after, and there are some times where there's a potential, you might make more noise than normal, and we're trying to mitigate that as much as possible.
Thank you. So, Mr. Town Administrator, so if you could contact Pat Haddad just to find out what her policies and us using the robocall, so that might save the town some money. But if it, if we can't use it often enough, then also look into the cost of the town.
Yep.
It's actually coming up on our own robocall system. Sure. Any other questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Joyce?
No, no.
No, I don't.
Well, thank you, everyone. And once again, I'm sorry about the concerns in the community. We, we work hard to be part of the community and...
Absolutely. Excellent neighbor.
Be a good neighbor. Yeah, very good neighbor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being patient, Mr. Joyce.
Not at all.
Don't hold it against us.
Uh, Mr. Pillings?
Two quick points. Number one is, the Board of Health has found that one of the most effective nets we have or outreach is is the message boards that we move around the town. We post the things on Facebook or whatever, get nothing. As soon as we put those message boards up, it starts ringing. It's a very effective communicator. And obviously, if something's happened instantaneously, we can't make that happen, but to tell somebody about something coming up. The other thing is, is I would be opposed to having another call system. We're already trying to get everybody signed up for code red. I would want to have a separate system for calling people. Code red could effectively do what needs to be done. But that's, again, my opinion for, really to be discussing it more in the future.
Yeah, emergency prep, we can have a conversation about how we go forward as well and what's actually included in the future policy, and if there could be an amendment to the policy.
So, for the robocalls, you don't have to sign up for it. They just call everybody, I believe, in town?
Correct.
Right, I mean...
That's not a sign-up thing?
Right, it's not a sign-up, so it's a little different from what you're talking about.
For code red, I can call everybody in town, whether they signed up for it or not. It's called an all-call, and you hit every phone.
Oh, okay, okay. I understand.
And it's, it's the time the call goes out. So, if you're driving through town, you'll get the notification.
May I ask a question, Mr.?
Yes.
Is, so it's just the email thing was the, was the thing you signed into from code red? Okay, I understand.
Yeah, because you can sign up for text messages, for phone calls, for emails, and obviously, we can't, there's certain things you can't do, like an email while you're driving.
Okay.
But it would hit every phone.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm not saying we don't utilize code red. If I were going to, if I were going to support it to be used for something like this, that's a non-life-threatening emergency, then I think I would expect from the emergency, and I think we're getting off topic, I apologize, but I would just expect there needs to be some, some outreach to the public, so they understand the difference between the two when they're contacted. That's all.
Very fair.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to that discussion, Todd.
Thank you. Public input, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Have a good night.
I see a public input. I see. Glenn, you get your hand up.
Yeah, can you come see me?
I can.
Yeah, so, hey, hey, everyone. Hey, so I just wanted to give a comment, because again, it's, I, I understand the concerns over Dyton Power, and again, I, I heard it my first time a couple of weeks ago, but again, I just moved on, I guess, and then you guys had a valid concern, and I kind of felt, you know, it went off topic around focusing more on Dyton Power versus, you know, as, again, everyone goes to Facebook, and, and the joke for many people were like, oh, we hear the thing, how many is it till someone turns to Facebook? But again, how, I think the town, as you mentioned, what this, Dyton Power is, you know, private, they probably have certain industry regulations they have to stand to. But again, many people are off complaining when, you know, um, the, the town's firing range that we have was being utilized for all the various communities late at night, you know, people are on Facebook complaining as well. And I mean, to Brett's point, code red, I would agree, is out of the question. I mean, you know, it's how, I understand there's things like that need to be aware and communicated, but no matter how much you try and do it, people aren't going to pay attention. But, you know, to me, I don't, I don't think it's fair only singling out Dyton Power versus, um, I know a lot of people are up in arms over the late-night shooting that was occurring over there at the, the town firing range, but, you know, I, I agree, how could we do something? But again, as a taxpayer, should our, should our taxes be utilized for private businesses or things like that? Or, because obviously, I don't think those reverse calls are free either, right?
No. Yeah, the robocalls, no. But I, may I, I just, I just wanted to add, Glenn, I wasn't, I don't think the board, certainly, we weren't singling Dyton Power out. It's, it was more that when the issue was raised by residents, it brought us to have the, a conversation, a broader conversation about how can we get the word out quickly, right, faster than social media, or at least in tandem with social media, about non-emergency situations that are, are of public interest. They are a good neighbor, though.
Right, right. I appreciate it. I mean, the thing is, it's, it's just, it's tough, because as you see, you know, social media, the town, couple of town pages that are out there, it's turned to, hey, I think I got a package delivered. Did anyone see it? And it's like, ugh, yeah, we kind of know what's coming, but, yeah, right, I, I get it. But it's good, at least for the town residents, I think, to hear the update at, at this meeting that, you know, you guys feel over the call, and Dyton Power did give an update that they were doing a, you know, a routine.
Uh-oh, he muted himself. That's never happened.
Did we do that, or did he do it?
That wasn't me.
We swear it wasn't us, Glenn.
Oh, no, no, sorry. That was, that was me, guys. I hit my, my, I'm sorry. Yeah, Brad, I, now you say, you know, I'm going to shut up.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you.
And again, Mr. Joyce, thanks, thanks for coming and informing the public as to what's going on with the power plant. There were some concerns. Yes?
My name, my name's Bob Derby. I live at 207 Forest Street, or what's left of it. I'd like to address what the gentleman was just saying about the firing range. It's getting out of hand down there, a lot. And I understand we have Taunton coming now. Is that true?
They've been, yeah, for a few ye, years.
Since you opened the range up, there was an agreement between the city of Taunton, town of Dyton, our Board of Sleckman, who was in there at the time, and the mayor. There was a form signed, and I believe Sleckman Goulat was in there at the time.
I signed it as well.
And Dr. Z was too.
But it was a long, it was years ago.
It was an agreement where Taunton could use it, and Dyton could use it, nobody else. But I, I know what Mr. Jeremy is talking about. Right now, where they're up there in training, because they have to have this type of training during the, when it starts to get dark. It has to be, they have to qualify during daylight hours, then now they have to train so many hours at that time. So, right now, Taunton, Dyton, us, that's being used on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I believe it starts like two, two thirty, three o'clock, they get there, then it gets dark, and then they leave. The number of guys up there, I, I don't know. I'd have to discuss that with my firearms instructor, because he attends certain times there, too. But this is training that they have to have. And, and I understand his point, what he, what he's getting at, that they are firing, handguns are firing, rifles, okay? But that's the training they have to have. It's mandatory. They have to do that. So, it's not anything that they're just going up there playing around and goofing off. This is what they have to have.
So, is the, is the, excuse me for a second. Is the public being made aware, like, we, we...
Yes. Lieutenant Cronin did put something out there, something out to let people know that this is what will be happening these days and this time. So, the public knows. I admit, I have selfish concerns, myself and a handful of people like to archery hunt down there and firearm, too. It's not so much, you know, we're not against the firing range at all. We, we believe officers should be trained.
Absolutely.
But Taunton, that's debatable. They've got plenty of room where they, I don't understand why they're coming down here. I honestly don't.
To address that.
But, but to, if I can continue.
Yes, yes.
Uh, it's more or less, it's the time. Does it always have to be November and December? It, it seems like that those are the, the months and the, I mean, a lot of people in the woods, not just hunters. You got horseback riders back there, you got hikers. The other day, someone was out there trying to cut a Christmas tree. So it's, it's not just the hunters back there.
Yeah, but I thought we put no trespassing signs in where this is, where this happens. So the public shouldn't, residents shouldn't be there.
Superintendent Ferry had a meeting and then did post signs down there, I believe.
So that would be at their own risk.
Right.
The people.
I've seen, the, the range is safe. There's no, there's no, there's no question about safety or anything like that. I just questioned the, the wisdom of having time.
Okay. My personal opinion is that November and December is probably a better time because it gets dark earlier. I wouldn't want them to do it in the middle of summer when it's going to get dark at eight o'clock at night and start shooting and they have to, uh, do the nighttime shooting or practicing. Uh, so by having it November, December where it's getting dark earlier, I would think it'd be a little bit better.
Now, it, it doesn't seem to happen every night. Is it possible to, uh, to find, because I call a lot and find out if they're gonna shoot or not. Because I won't hunt back there if they're gonna, because it doesn't, doesn't do any good to hunt.
But you're not hunting at night, though.
Yeah, no, no, but right around dusk, right around dusk is prime time.
Sure.
If I'm sitting in the tree for three hours and right around prime time this starts up, I might as well climb down. It's over with. You know, but i- if we could find out exactly, like tonight, they were supposed to be shooting, but they weren't. If, if we could find out exactly when they're gonna be there, instead of a, I guess it's on Facebook, which I wouldn't be caught dead on, but Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, is it, Bobby?
Yes.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, yeah.
I mean, sometimes they shoot, sometimes they don't. Would it be possible to find out when exactly they're, they're not gonna shoot? So we could go back there, just maybe something a little bit more detailed, that's all. I believe tonight that they didn't have, probably due to the weather, the forecast that they thought was gonna snow or do something. So they weren't gonna go out there. And I don't, and I don't think they go out there during, during rain time and, and during that, you know, that time. Just for safety issues.
Dr. Z first and then Sleckman Hall.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chief, because my, I don't remember exactly. I understand, it doesn't seem like you have any issue with, obviously, the Dyton Police using the range.
Not, not, none whatsoever.
Your concern is Taunton. So, and I understand that. So as signing the agreement back then, my understanding was, yes, Taunton could use the range, but also there was some kind of, Taunton was also letting us, it was an agreement, give and take between both towns.
Taunton holds an, an in-service training.
Correct.
For, for, um, which everybody, you know, the guys have to attend every year. And they go there, all the Dyton guys go there. They train, um, with the Taunton guys. I have, uh, one of our officers, Sergeant Nichols, is an instructor for TESA. He teaches over there also when they do the TESA training. Um, so, so that's why there was an agreement with, with us and Taunton. And we're not the only ones that go in service there. I believe there's other depart, area departments that go for Taunton at the, their, their, uh, their facility. So that was an agreement that we, we kind of went with, that they were gonna do in-service training. We allowed to go there. We all, you know, like I said, we have an instructor that goes and helps there. Um, I have the instructor, um, Patrolman Steele, who does the firearms. He goes up there at times when they're doing this training. So we work together with Taunton, which is, 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 is very good. Because if something happened in this town and we needed Taunton, you guys would be aware. They'd send five, six guys at one time.
No doubt.
Over the back, it's up in a heartbeat. We'd help them and that's how many guys we have, we'd help them. So it's a, it's a great working relation with, with both, you know, city of Taunton and us. I mean, it's really, it's really working well. And I don't want to lose that, you know? I don't think the town does, and I don't, and I don't think Taunton does either.
And I just didn't want you to think that it was like just a take from, or we were just inviting them in, but not getting that give and take relationship, that symbiosis.
Am I under, to understand that this applies only to Taunton? You know, other towns? We're not gonna have a shooting gallery back there, right? No, it's, it's, it's Dyton officers, Taunton officers, and that's it. And, and I've already said to, to my guys, if they go back there and they wanna, you know, just practice shooting, they don't go alone. I don't want anybody that back there by themselves. It's always two guys, three guys or whatever, but, um, that's how it's supposed to be there. And I don't know if you see, there's a, there's a red flag there too.
Yeah.
And we try to tell the neighborhood, you know, on Tremont Street, that area, when that flag is up, that's Dyton Police or Taunton Police shooting. If that flag's down and someone's shooting back there, you know, call. We tell them to call.
That's him.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a?
Your question?
You answered his question.
Oh, what? Look, I'm on the ball tonight.
Is there any other public input? I know you've identified yourself, but for the record, can you identify yourself again?
We remember.
More Smith Street. It's been a very not boring night. Some more mundane concerns. Um, so a couple of issues I wanted to bring up with you guys. One is, uh, about these meetings and other communications that come from the town. Uh, we put together PDF files.
Yes.
Uh, for example, tonight, uh, we had a very large PDF packet, which I go through. Uh, it seems to me, now, I'm a software engineer, so I'm kind of techie, uh, that these PDFs are pictures. There, there always seem to be pictures. They're not like documents. That makes them not searchable. And sometimes the pictures are taken, they're, they're off the edges and such like that. I would just like to put in a simple request that whoever prepares the PDFs, consider using the actual documents to create the PDF. That way they're searchable. You could cut the ta, you know, I can cut and paste the text and whatnot.
Dr. Z, you want to answer that?
No, I, I need to ask because I'm not an expert. So how would that be done? I literally don't.
So I, I was gonna offer, you know, if somebody wants to know, I'm glad, gladly show you. Um, you know, when you're creating the PDF, you know, it's a difference of, what, you know, I don't know what they're actually doing. If they're scanning the documents, which is probably likely.
Yeah, yeah, like into a copy. If we have any like hot copy mail, we scale that in as well.
That you have to do.
Yeah.
But if you get something in an email, you get a Word doc or something like that.
Agreed.
You can put that directly into the PDF and then it becomes searchable. And so what I'm saying is that if I go through the town website, I can't really search any of these, you know, minutes and all kinds of stuff.
Like keep, like open the doc, I just want to make sure I understand. You mean, and I, and I understand the utility of it and I agree with you. You mean, open the document. It's a large PDF, hundred something pages. You type COVID nineteen, you should get a bunch of hits, right?
Exactly.
And we can't do that. Okay.
Cannot do that right now because it's all pictures.
Understood.
Sleckman Hall?
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
It is my understanding that a company is currently working on, is it just the Dyton's webpage?
Yes. Uh, yeah, like it doesn't have, I, like it doesn't have anything to do with the documents and the PDFs. So like actually on the web, so like actually on our webpage, those are the documents, the documents we create on our own. Uh, and we have an issue, there's an accessibility issue with that as well.
Correct. And do you want me to elaborate?
Sure.
Sorry. May I elaborate?
I don't know what he's talking about. I don't, I don't understand it.
Well, I'm hoping one of the reasons that, uh, we are redoing, I shouldn't say redoing, revamping the website, um, is because of the PDF issue. So in addition to not being user-friendly, I guess we'll call it, unsearchable, they're also not accessible. So we're going through this whole conversation and our ADA coordinator will be part of it as well. How to make those PDF documents accessible to someone, for example, with visual impairments. Um, so I think what you're saying would actually solve the problem in the sense of if you can search by the text, by keywords, then someone could read, could be read as well.
Yes.
While you're at it, can you make it not send me a seizure every time I look at the website?
Hey, I have the same reaction.
Yeah, that is definitely on our radar.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Is it a matter of software?
It's like a capability that our current website platform does not have.
So that's something in the budgetary process we might be able to address or is it really cost prohibitive?
It's not cost.
No, I think it's relatively affordable and addressing it. Like it just actually takes additional effort on our part as well, which we don't have a problem with. We just need to get there.
And not just that, but we also, um, applied for the MOD grant with the ADA coordinator and we requested fifteen thousand dollars in that grant to help make the website more accessible. So if we get the grant, fingers crossed, then we may not even have to pay for, out of town funds, the addition, the improvements that you, you are pointing out, which need to be made.
I'm simply asking, you know, the people that actually do the work, you know, you just change your methodology.
Sure. Thank you.
If I may, on a, on a more important topic, I think, is these meetings and other meetings like it, when I'm not here, I'm, I'm at home and I'm watching these things on YouTube. Um, and I suspect other people are watching on Zoom. The audio quality is horrible. It's truly, it, it cannot be heard. Uh, I've had several friends tonight tell me, they texted me during this meeting, that they could not hear the, the town nurse. Not, not at all. Not a word she said. Um, I don't think that's a good way to run things. Um, I, I help run a chorus and in our chorus, we have a group of people similar to this, in a room similar to this. I've got one microphone, costs about a hundred bucks and everything is crystal clear. So I don't understand why we have the videos that, that we're putting on, online, uh, why you can't hear anybody. You, you know, Mr. Hall has a tendency to mumble and I, I can't hear him. No, you don't mumble. You, I can always hear.
I do too.
So one thing, if I may, one thing I noticed, and I'm, I'm actually, I should take it back. I'm actually glad that this will be uploaded to YouTube. I have watched a YouTube recording, waiting for the actual recording from the, the actual cameras that were installed in the building to be uploaded. And so I couldn't hear well on the YouTube, but the second that the cable television committee uploaded the real recording from the official cameras, it was crystal clear. So I think the issue could possibly be the, this Zoom, uh, microphone right here.
So yeah, like Friday, we have five more of those microphones actually arriving. So ho, so yeah, ho. Yeah, at the end of the day, I hope that will be the trick, but we do, uh, actually have an issue with our Comcast bandwidth as well. Um, and at the end of last week, we increased it for that same reason.
But this is not a bandwidth issue. This is a microphone issue. That you, literally, there's so much echo in this room. If you're not, you know, I, I speak, you know, loudly and clearly. If you don't speak loudly and clearly, it just, it gets lost in the, in, in the echo and you can't hear anything. I ask all of you, please go on our website or on our YouTube channel and, and try to watch the selectmen's meeting. Uh, I watched, there was a stormwater, we couldn't understand the word.
We put these, uh, panels up because of the echo. Perhaps we have to go put some more up.
Do some more. And that was actually, so I just wanted to bring that to it.
No, no, I think it's a, it's a good criticism. We need to hear that, no pun intended, but we need to hear from people if they can't hear us. This is, as my understanding, this is the only microphone we're using right now for the Zoom, which means that if somebody's over there, they may not hear that person or overhear or whatever. But I know that we're in the process of getting more microphones and I would be interested in that one microphone that you're talking about that you.
It's called a Yeti. It's a USB port, plug it right in.
I have no idea what that means.
Like I said, I do, in my chorus, we have a director standing in a large room, echoey like this, and we've got like forty people. And we put the mic right in the middle and it picks everything up perfectly, uh, without any, uh, problems.
I want to have our cable person, Dave Marv, will speak.
I do want to say that when we, uh, upload videos to YouTube, like the second time around, I'm live, usually I'm home working. What I'll do is I'll play that video for a while and I'll check the audio of the video. And, um, they seem to be fine, but we'll check it again. But I, I agree with, uh, Dr. Z, when we first, when they first go up, you go live on Zoom, I mean, I'm sorry, live on YouTube, then you might have a little bit of an issue. But once we upload it officially again to cable, it's a bit of audio and video quality of that video, you know? So we'll keep an eye on it. And once again, our email address is out there. Just, just let us know, you know, anybody have problems, we can check it out.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Dr. Z?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, and I noticed the same thing, um, Dave, so I appreciate the backup on that. Um, but to Mr. Moore's point, and I think this is what you were trying to hit home, I don't think we should have to have people wait till that meeting is uploaded. Like some people do watch, as you know, in real time. They should also, you know, be able to hear what's going on in real time.
Understood. Any other public, uh, input? If not, I'll move on to announcements. Could you read the announcement?
Yeah, sorry. Um, okay, uh, my first announcement is, uh, from, uh, the town of Dyton Board of Health, but also Manic Community Health Center. Um, get the flu shot, not the flu. The town of Dyton will be hosting a flu shot clinic on Saturday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, from ten AM to twelve PM at Old Town Hall here at one, 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 Somerset Avenue, Dyton. Um, this flyer, um, there is a QR code. It says, scan the code. You won't be participating this way, Ken.
I've already had my flu shot.
I do too, actually. It says, scan the code to book your appointment online or use this link. And the link is on the flyer. I'll read it. It's HTTPS, uh, colon, forward slash, forward slash, calendley.com, forward slash, man, man, main, TCH, COVID vaccine, forward slash, Dyton, dash, flu, dash, clinic. And to book an appointment, you, by phone, you can call the Board of Health at seven, seven, four, eight, seven, two, zero, nine, four, three. Please bring your insurance card. And this is voluntary, Mr. Gulu Chi. Just, just teasing you. Okay. Um, announcements. Uh, the town of Dyton Fire Department will be ushering Santa Claus through the streets of Dyton on Sunday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-one, starting at nine AM. The rain date, please note, is Sunday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The fire, the fire department respectfully asks that residents, please refrain from calling the Dyton Communication Center to ask where Santa is located on that day as the phone lines need to be opened for emergencies. And also, please note the proposed schedule has been posted on their Facebook page as well. The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at eight AM on Saturday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at Town Hall in the lower level, which is at nine, seven, nine Somerset Avenue. There will be a special election held on Saturday, January twenty-ninth, from ten AM to two PM. Okay, four hours?
Yes, twenty-four hours at this point.
Okay. At the Dyton Elementary School for the proposed Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Building Project. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April first, twenty twenty-two. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal by our highway department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Town Administrator, so report.
Yeah, yeah, like I, I just have a few quick things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, I just, I just wanted to provide, I wanted to provide the board, I'm in the residence of Dyton, a copy with the grant application, uh, that we submitted, um, actually for last Friday, uh, with the city of Taunton, the city of Attlebar, and the town of North Attlebar, Berkeley and Rehoboth. Uh, like it's, um, it's a grant, uh, that would provide up to three thousand dollars a year for the next three years, uh, for, for additional contact tracing, uh, for public health nursing and inspection funding. Uh, can, uh, we do hope to hear whether we're, uh, have been accept. So by the first part of January, we, uh, it's by the first part of January, we expected here. Uh, so that is that. But we had a really good group, um, and we came together and like, uh, I mean, at the end of the day, we came together in about a month and a half to apply. So, uh, yeah, good news there, hopefully. So, just questions?
Yes, specific, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So you said up to three thousand dollars, but we're applying with other towns. So each town gets, each municipality, I'll call it, gets three thousand?
So the state in the FY, in the state in the FY twenty-two budget, they have made grants up to three hundred thousand, up to three thousand, up to three hundred thou, up to three hundred thousand for the whole region. Uh, so, uh, so that would be, that would be split between the six.
Yep.
Um, so however, it does, the three thousand, the three hundred thousand has the, has the very good possibility to, has the very good possibility to be supplemented with oppa funding as well. Um, I mean, the oppa budget, uh, that passed, actually the legislative. I mean, the ARPA budget that passed, actually the legislative, the end of last week, there was, I forget the exact dollar amount, but I want to say an additional two hundred million for these type of programs. So yeah, like we do expect it, are hopeful. Like actually that three hundred thousand will be the minimum here.
Any questions, Dr. Zee?
Sorry. To piggyback off that, so I guess my, my next question would be, you had mentioned ARPA. And I know, I know this is not on the agenda, but as you know, one of your goals is to like help devise an ARPA budget plan. So will this potential contact tracing be part of that discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
So in all, so in also, like I did just want to provide an update there, I did want to provide an update. There's a Board of Health opening that is being advertised until December twenty-second. I can, the information, I can, all the information for that, it's actually on the Town of Dayton website. I can, there's like an office assistant position for prime time that's also being advertised. Yeah, I can, all the information for that is on our website as well. So, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have any questions, Dr. Zee?
Yeah, just a quick, about the two vacancies, one Board of Health, one prime time, which is like a full-time, you know, personnel. Would, is, I don't even know what I want to ask, never mind, it doesn't even matter. It doesn't. It's, it's like procedural, I'll connect with you.
It's automatic, you just raise your hand every time you have an opportunity to ask a question. Selectman Hope?
Well, we're on the discussion of topic of the Board of Health.
Yes.
It is my understanding that they are down a commissioner and when.
Then a Board Health member.
Yes.
Yes.
And when will that position be filled? Or a recommendation brought before us?
So, the position is being posted until, until the twenty-second of this month. So that, so, so, so that is, so that is two weeks from today. Like after that, the names, after that, the names will go to the Board of Health. So probably either on the, at the, at the Selectment Meeting on either the twenty-ninth of this month or the twelfth of January. Yeah, like at the twelfth of January, a recommendation will come from the Board of Health.
And the second question I have under the Massachusetts law. Positions of the Board of Health.
Yep.
Are they classified as special positions?
They would be. That to be hon, to be honest with you, like I don't actually know the answer. So I don't have the answer, I, so I don't, so I don't have the answer and I don't want to misspeak either. I can follow up on that, whether they're classified here in Dayton.
As special employees, I don't.
Yeah, as a special municipal employee. Yes, and I do want to check on that before I speak and say something wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. On the old business review, this.
One last question, I'm sorry. Just because I'm curious, because I want to make sure, I recently came across the post, I know we posted it online about Board of Health. I didn't even see the prime time one posted, it may well be there, I've just been busy. Is it also on the town website under jobs and vacancies?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Thank you.
So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda item number eight, old business review, discuss and act update on proposed Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School MSBA project letter to MSBA. We have a, we were provided a copy of the draft letter, does anybody have any questions about that draft letter? I can read it if, if you would like, it's up to.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't.
I just wanted to comment, if I may, that I felt that the letter, which I read for the first time this morning, was extremely well-written. I thought the arguments for needing, not wanting, needing some kind of accommodation or delay in the date of the vote were extremely well-presented and cogent. So I just wanted to thank the Town Administrator.
Selectman Hope?
Last Thursday, Town Administrator Mike Mullin and I attended a meeting with representatives from each of the towns in the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District. And at that meeting, every member voiced concerns. And one of the concerns that they had was the lack of communication to the voters of each of their towns. Each of those communities expressed concern that their representative had not come before the Board of Selectmen to explain the project or provide feedback and lines of communication with the town and with the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District. Nowhere and at no point has Bristol Plymouth scheduled an open forum to discuss the project with the voters. Just as we did in preparation for Dayton Elementary School, even to the point of what we did in preparation for our town vote this past November. Having a meeting, a vote in January without that information is not transparency. And I question, and they did as well, how successful a vote would be with such short notice and such lack of information. People are not going to vote for something they know nothing about. So Mayor Sean O'Connor asked us to do a couple of things. One, to draft the letter, which is the Mullin outstanding, and thank you. And to also reach out to our legislators, Pat Hadad, to voice our concerns. Capital project funding is no longer under the auspices of the governor. It is under the House of Representatives Legislature. And they oversee MS, the school, SBAB, the School Building Assistance Program, and ask them, one, to extend the one hundred and twenty-day period. So there can be more discussion. And also more negotiation, because all of the towns have expressed concern about the High Price Act. And also to ask our legislators if they would advocate or provide more funding to decrease the individual town assessment. And that is critical. They have two ways to do that, they can provide more funding to SBAB or they can issue or allocate ARPA funds for that project. Either way, it would decrease the total cost to the member towns.
We did invite our VP Representative to come to this meeting. He was not able to attend, but I believe he's going to attend December twenty-ninth meeting. Would some people from BP also, so that we can get more information, but that doesn't stop us.
We're waiting to hear, okay. That's the plan, though. Okay.
So that's why we're sending this letter out, so we can get more time, just to let the public know what's going on with this. Selectman?
What, and I am not making a motion or any suggestion that we amend this letter, which I think is spot-on. But I did just want to highlight, since it's not in the letter, that one of my other major concerns is this four-hour voting period, like where, why, four hours?
That was set by BP as well, from ten to two.
My issue is not who sent it.
I've never heard of a four-hour election.
My issue is that on the weekends, this is a weekend, correct? Yeah. On a weekend, most parents are doing sports-related things with their kids in the morning. You know, just errands, okay, they do it in the morning. From ten to two is just, I feel like, I don't know, I'm certainly not abscribing any motives, but it certainly doesn't feel like it's encouraging people to come out and vote. It sounds like the window is very small and so I would hope that, well, I guess it's not in the letter, but I would hope somehow the message gets back to them that that also is at least a great concern to me. Not that they care, but I'm sure other people are concerned about it as well. Polls are usually open eight to ten hours. This is like standard everywhere I've ever seen an election held. So I don't know what the intent is, I certainly don't care. I, I think it's honestly insulting to have it open only four hours.
So are you asking to amend this letter?
I, I don't want to give the Town Administrator any more.
I don't have any problem, I mean, I don't have any problem amending it, I actually think that's a very, very, very good point and I agree with that.
If you want to, but I certainly am not going to.
So we'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I motioned that the Board of Selectmen approve the letter dated December eighth, 2021, as presented this evening, but also with an amendment to be inserted by the Town Administrator, that we, that the Board of Selectmen also does share concerns over the length of time that the voting will be allowed to occur on this important project.
Is there a second?
Absolutely, second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call or vote. Selectman Hope?
Aye.
Dr. Zee?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Selectman reports. Are there any reports?
I just have one comment. I don't really have a formal report. I did, based on discussion last Wednesday regarding some questions, it seems like the public, but also the Board of Selectmen had about lack of clarity of, of the Water District's capital slash master plan, which does exist, it is a real thing. It is in the Town Administrator's office, it's a document. I did speak to Water Commissioner Derek Latch and he was amenable to requesting that Woodard and Curran, who was the consulting firm that put together the plan in consultation with the Water District, do a summary presentation of that plan to the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting upcoming. I don't have any more information, but I'll keep the board updated when we have some more specifics.
That would be helpful to the residents. Selectman Hope?
As the liaison to the Water District, TIA Mullin and I will be meeting with the Superintendent and a member of the Water District Commission to express the concerns that were voiced at the last meeting. And also developing better lines of communication between the residents of Dayton and the Water District. As I said last week, and I will say it again, in fairness to the Water District, they inherited many, many problems that they are trying to fix. The real criticism that I have of the Water District is a matter of communicating needs and strategic planning to the public. And having worked with the Commissioners, I don't think that's going to be a problem in formulating that, because I believe much of it is done. What needs to be done is communicating that to the public. And I know we can be a great help to them and they are willing to work with us. So I'm, I'm very confident that by educating the public, we can, one, develop a good relationship, which we have to, to some degree. I mean, there were issues in the past that, again, like the project issues, this group did not create. And they're quite amenable to working with us. My relationship with them has been a good one. And coming before this board is something that they're quite, you know, agreeable to.
And, and just to piggyback off that, when I reached out to them, it was more from a place of, eventually, some of this, some of what they want to do, all of it, actually, is going to cost money.
Yes.
So my thought and just what I've learned over the last five or six years is, you have to do things, I'm not saying anything was not, but it's better to bring people along by, by putting out as much clear information and explanation as possible. I think that's a way to build consensus with the public. That's who's going to approve or not approve these important projects, many of which do need to happen. So I look forward to that improved communication, but also some kind of simpatico between the Water District and the Board of Selectmen, because some of their Water District issues, as we've discussed, do innovate different things that the town wants to do or different things that the town needs to do, like simple things like repaving roads can be affected by poor water main infrastructure, for example. So I look forward to that symbiosis between us, I think it's needed, but also bringing in the public as well for buy-in.
They have also expressed a willingness to work with the Capitol Outlay Committee. Because they understand, because many grants, both from the state and the federal level, are coming directly to the town.
Correct.
And they're labeled as water and sewer. So they understand the need to work with us, because that's where the funding stream is coming from. And I'm confident that we can.
There are other, everything you said is correct, but I think as we proceed forward together, right? Acknowledging that we do need to work together on it, I think there are also some state grant opportunities and other opportunities that the Water District may be able to explore separate from the Town of Dayton, but still sharing those goals as, again, one affects the other. So I look forward to that partnership continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My report is not as exciting as that report. Town Administrator myself met with Mary Rebello, who celebrated her third birthday Monday, and she was very excited to have us there and other people to be with her. I did ask her whether she credited herself for her longevity and I was hoping she would say a glass of wine and a cigar every day. However, she said, just keep busy. So that's, that was her thing. But she was very pleasant, very nice and if we could all live to one hundred and three and be as healthy as she is, I mean, that's, it's just amazing how active.
Awesome lady.
She is and she was just excited and we were, sent an email a day later saying that she still talks about the fact that we were there and.
I don't know why, I mean.
They didn't say it was good, Mike.
Mr. Mullin actually knelt down in front of her and I think she was impressed with that, so.
Oh.
It was a nice gesture. But it was nice to see, to see that.
I have.
Sure, I'll get that tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't bow down for the chief, just for the.
Well, Alice had also asked that you do that, it's a whole different story. Selectman Hope, did you?
Yes. Last evening, I attended the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School Committee meeting with Dr. Frieswick of NESDEC in regards to the selection of a new Superintendent. Earlier this month, Dr. Friesick met with teachers and administrators to put together a list of credentials, criteria that they were looking for in a new Superintendent. of credentials, criteria that they were looking for in a new superintendent. She also met with a group of parents from Dayton and Rehoboth, a meeting which I also attended. And we gave our input, what we were looking for. Last evening she met with the school committee, and they also gave their input. And the four areas that came out of that meeting, they are looking for someone who is a good communicator. Preferably someone with vocational and technical education experience. Preferably somebody with regional school district experience. And fourthly, someone with district-wide planning experience in the area of capital projects and curriculum and instruction. On January 6th, the selection committee, which will be made up of members of the school committee, teachers, at least one student that I know of, and a member of the Board of Selectmen of each town, will be holding a workshop to, um, establish the process for submitting the names of either three or four candidates to the school committee for their final selection of a superintendent. And out of that meeting, the goal came that the selection of a new superintendent would be completed by March.
Which brings us to our next agenda item on the new business. Review, discuss, and act on the Board of Selectmen's designated need to the Dayton-Rohoboth Regional School District Superintendent screening. Does anybody on the board have an interest in being the representative?
Mr. Chairman, my, just my simple observation, just based on what Selectman Hull just said, um, is that, um, he has an interest, um, in attending the meetings. He's taken an interest in, um, the selection, obviously, of a new superintendent. I know you attend the meetings regularly, just because that's your background. You were on the school committee before. Personally, I don't think there's any more appropriate, uh, representative or designee, um, than Selectman Hull. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Before you make the motion, would you accept it if we did?
I hope so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have also served as chairman of the selection committee of a headmaster in Taunton, member of the selection committee for the hiring of Superintendent Dr. Frank Connor, as well as a member of a selection committee for a middle school principal in Taunton.
Mr. O'Connor did a, I was not there for his tenure, but, um, I hear very good things about what was achieved, and I'm talking specifically things like student achievement under his tenure. So I feel very comfortable to appoint you.
As someone who evaluated him, I found him to be an outstanding superintendent, and his ability to reach out to the public was incredible, including Saturdays where he'd meet with residents, go door-to-door when he believed in a project that he was trying to sell to the voters. So he really went out of his way to reach out to the voters and the public in general, not just be in the office.
I think that's really important to, regardless of the way, uh, uh, you know, a superintendent may feel about an issue, or I think it's just important to have that type of personality who's willing to do that outreach, willing to hear tough questions, willing to answer tough questions. Um, so I look forward to, um, hopefully, having, um, a superintendent, um, a successor, um, that will take, uh, that will take pleasure almost in, in that type of a relationship with the public. And I'm not making a comment, um, about anyone currently or in the past.
Dr. Z, thank you for your vote of confidence.
So entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I motion that we appoint Selectman Leonard Hull, um, as the Selectmen's designee to the Dayton-Rohoboth Regional School District Superintendent Screening Committee.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any discussion?
I'm thankful that, um, he wishes to, uh, invest his, uh, time, um, and efforts and energy into this. It is very important.
Gentlemen, thank you for your vote of confidence.
Well, we haven't voted yet, so.
That's next.
Did someone request a secret ballot? A call for roll call vote. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Campuchico is an aye.
Aye.
Selectman Hull is an aye. Thank you for, uh, offering to do this. Just want to remind the board that we've got 45 minutes before we lose cable, so, and we have a lot left to do. Uh, the next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on proposed letter to Representative Haddad and Senator Pacheco regarding CARES Act funding. Has everybody on the board had an opportunity to read that letter?
Yes, sir.
We're asking for additional help till the end of the year to help us with, uh, CARES, uh, fund Monday, uh, funding, uh, for expenses in the town. I'll entertain a motion if there's no questions on the letter.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed letter to Representative Pat- Patricia Haddad and Senator Mark Pacheco regarding CARES Act funding, uh, as presented and prepared this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye, passes. The next agenda item, I know you've been waiting all night for this.
Thank you.
Is to appoint Leslie Phillips to the Board of Registars. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Leslie Phillips to the Board of Registars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And just, th- this is to fill.
This is to.
The vacancy and then.
Vacancy, somebody, uh, resigned.
Yep.
Meeting or two ago.
Mm-hmm.
And this is to fill that vacancy.
Thank you, sir.
And this is a recommendation of the, uh, town clerk, I guess. He did the interview. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Congratulations.
I want to thank you for, uh, offering to, uh, work for the town. I may have given you some misinformation earlier. I said that they meet three or four times a week, two to three hours a night. I don't think they meet that often. I don't believe this is pay, though, right?
It might be, it's very, it's not a lot.
I'm sure the money is not the motivation. So thank you again for, uh, offering to do this.
Thank you very much.
Uh, review, discuss, and act on the appointment of Nicholas Farrier as we, as a reserve police officer. If I remember, uh, the last meeting, last week, so recent, uh, we appointed him as a dispatcher, but we did not have on the agenda to appoint him as a reserve, uh, police officer. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, oop, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nicholas Farrier as a reserve police officer for the town of Dayton.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Chief, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. It won't be 45 minutes, though. So, yes, um, last week you did reappoint Nicholas Farrier to a, uh, position on part-time dispatcher. Yeah, Nick was with us back in 2019, and he, at the time when he dispatched, he did a, a very nice job as a dispatcher down there. Um, he left there, he took an opportunity to take, uh, to go to the full-time police academy down in Cape Cod. So he attended that, he passed everything in there. Um, he came back to us, he was interested in coming back to the police department as a reserve if there was any openings. Um, he's train, he's got the proper training all done, he's, he's considered a, uh, he could be a full-time police officer, um, with this training, you know, the graduation of the academy. So, um, he showed interest, and then, uh, me and Lieutenant Cronin sat down, we talked about it, and I felt that we should give the, uh, Mr. Farrier an opportunity to, uh, work here. Um, so, uh, I, I thank you for that. Um, he, he has already passed a written exam that he did take back in February when we had the exam. Uh, he had to take the, uh, physical, he had to do the, um, psych test, he passed all that. Um, now he'll do us, uh, us stuff in, in-house training, and he'll do in-service, and he'll do what he, what he has to do. But, uh, I'd like to give him the opportunity, I think he'll be, he'll be, he'll do okay.
Thank you, Chief. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're asked for a motion to approve the following licenses with the contingent upon receipt of all applicable documentation and successful inspections by the building commissioner and police department. Those, uh, uh, groups that are, those businesses that are seeking this license is the Lynn's Propane Truck Corporation, 2281 Cedar Street, Truck and Ion Tr- Ion Traders LLC, 1892 County Street, Manham, New England, 123 William Street, Reese's Auto Sales, 556 Somerset Avenue, Bristol County Auto Sales, Inc., 2387 Winton Street, Kimball Enterprises, 2200 Lewis Street, Costas Truck and Auto, 665 Middle Street, North Dayton Garage, Inc., 757 William Street, Advanced Automotive Repairs, Inc., 196 William Street, 508 Customs, 1940 County Street, Town Line Auto, 100, 100 William Street, LNL Used Car Pots, 2091 Cedar Street, Borger's Foreign Auto Parts, Inc., 20, 2200 Lewis Street, and Bristol County Auto, Inc., 2387 Winton Street.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, my observation is that's 90% of the businesses in Dayton. I didn't realize they were all, I'd never seen it like that so clearly listed on the agenda.
And his automotive dealers license redos. Any, uh, further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Correspondents. Hello. I am emailed to submit my resignation and separation from the Dayton Human Rights Committee. At this time, given the needs of the town and the goals and missions of the committee, I do not wish to continue participating. Maybe when the time is right, I will consider returning. Thank you, Ellie, see you in a. Entertainer motion.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the resignation letter as presented with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
A second. Just want to add, she was our, uh, the secretary for the commission and she, committee, and she was, uh, very, uh, active in the, in the group.
May I ask you a question before we take a vote? How many members are left?
I think we might be down to two. We can't have a meeting.
Two plus you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a voting member. It actually may be three, and there's, uh, there's a resignation that somebody said they were going to resign months ago, hasn't attended the meetings, but has not formally sent us out.
Yes, yes. Um, I, okay, it's not on the agenda, so. I, I'm just thinking we may need to have a conversation about how to maybe revamp or revitalize the committee, but we can do that at a future meeting.
Did I ask for a motion yet, did I?
I think it is, that was under discussion.
I'll call for a vote if there's no further discussion. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. This letter is from Nicole Mello, a public health nurse. She was here earlier. Uh, she sent the Board of Selectmen this letter, and I told her that I would read this to the, uh, to the public. Good morning. I wanted to take a minute to reach out to the Board of Selectmen and acknowledge Dayton's school nurses. I am new to this position, as well as to the work that the school nurses have been doing during the pandemic, so please disregard if this has already been addressed. I have noticed that at times the Board of Selectmen have acknowledged certain individuals or organizations for going above and beyond within the town. In my short time as a town nurse, I have been blown away by the work of the nurses in the schools, in the schools are doing. They are not only keeping the children of Dayton healthy and safe, but also ensure that they are getting the necessary academic time. Just recently, the test and stay program was rolled out. This is an amazing program that allows students who have had close contact to remain in school as long as they test negative daily. The nurses have embraced this program, have been working alongside the organization that is aiding the schools in, in this process to ensure it as successful as possible. Without the aid of this program, and especially the school nurses, many of the Dayton students will be missing important academic time that is so greatly needed. As a town nurse, I am honored to work beside them, and as a parent, I am grateful to have them to advocate and care for my children. Lastly, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for taking the time to address my email. I thought that was a very nice, um, uh, email. Too often, town employees don't get commended and complimented, uh, so that's really appreciated.
I'm going to make a motion in a moment to, um, acknowledge this, and also that, you know, we're going to acknowledge the hard work of our public school nurses. I just wanted to mention, just to the public, um, it's not that we haven't gotten around to acknowledging the school public, uh, health nurses, it's just that I'm, I'm not in the school, so it's just, I know they're doing great things, I hear great things. What I also wanted to mention about Mrs. Mello as the public health nurse is that I think it's so nice, uh, to, and even in this short amount of time, to be working with someone like Mrs. Mello, who's not shy about, uh, publicly appreciating the work of her colleagues. Um, that's how I think I like to be. Um, so I just really appreciate that, um, and I just wanted Mrs. Mello to know that, um, I really appreciate this type of communication, and I'm sure the public school nurses also appreciate it as well.
Thank you. Minutes, approval of.
Do we need to vote on?
We should acknowledge it, the letter.
You want to make a motion? Selectman Hull?
Actually, I wouldn't like to make a recommend, uh, a motion that we, in writing, recognize the individual public school nurses. Um, and that a copy of that letter be placed in their permanent, uh, personal file.
So we don't have their files, that's helped by the school?
Yeah, they're district nurses, but.
Yeah.
They, are they employed by the school or by?
Yeah, yeah, the school district employees.
Oh, okay.
May I make a, may, I'm not going to second it, because I have, I think I have a better idea. Rather than a letter, I think we have a template.
A letter of letter has been busy lately, so.
I think we have a template certificate of recognition, and I would be, uh, amenable to, since they're not town employees, I'd be amenable to making a motion to have certificates of recognition distributed and given to the public school nurses, and I'd also, if the chairman is amenable, I'd, I'm more than happy to hand them out at a public meeting as we have done other people with certificates of recognition.
The board will hand it out.
Yep.
Uh, I'll entertain that motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, uh, that we, uh, have certificates of recognition drafted for our, uh, school nurses, uh, and that we present them, um, to them at a future public meeting.
Is there a second?
I second, but Mr. Jefferson has a question.
He want, he wants a certificate, too, that's what this is about.
Yeah, no, I don't want a certificate, I just wanted to make sure you guys are acknowledging, because I know I've heard and I mentioned it just Dayton, but also, you know, you got two other district nurses at the high school, and also I know we might act as two separate towns, but Rehoboth nurses as well. I mean, all the district nurses that we have, I think there's a total of six, uh, are doing quite a bit, and I've been dealing with them as well, so I just want to make sure that we maybe weren't just six, forgetting about some at the high school as well.
Yeah, no distinction.
I mean, it'd be great for us to recognize them, too.
So they're not Dayton or Rehoboth nurses, they're the district.
So all the nurses in the district.
Did the motion, was it specific to Dayton?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
I think I said school nurses.
Right.
So what is Mr. Jefferson asking? What do you have in your hand, Mr. Jefferson, then? We were addressing all the nurses.
He's just making sure.
Well, that's why I just wanted to clarify, because when I heard it first, that's why I wasn't sure. We were just talking to you. No, you guys are on the right track then, sorry, Ken.
Mr. Jefferson, it's great having you here on board without meeting this evening, thank you.
Uh, any discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico. Now, was that the motion that you were thinking of, uh, Selectman Hull? Or you were making a motion, was it different?
It was a little different in light of the fact that we, we won't be putting it in their personal file, because now, just for sake of clarity, if they are employed by the school department, how is Mr. Pilling their supervisor?
No, he's not a, he never said, no, he's not. As you had stated earlier tonight, he does have certain state.
Roles, yeah.
Powers and duties, right? Um, but not, he's not overseeing them, it's just that sometimes the decisions that I think the school nurses may make, he also can have some kind of a say in, under his legal authority as a health agent.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, you nailed it, you nailed it.
Next agenda item is approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of December 1st, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's, uh, meeting minutes of our regular December 1st, 2021 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants, all dated December 8th, 2021. Warrant number 23A-22 in the amount of $124,434.80, and warrant 23B-22 in the amount of $299,088.54.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, a call for a vote.
Selectman Hull?
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Public input.
Don't disappoint me.
We have 31 minutes. I sped things up just for this.
I just want to make an observation. We're not the big evil Republicans everybody purports us to be. I actually agreed with you Brett twice this evening, and.
And he's putting it on record.
That's on public record. Maybe more than that too. But no, good meeting tonight, thank you, and, you know, we'll, we'll continue doing what we're doing and watching and, you know, being a more active part. We have more members now than we did a little while ago, so it's all working out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, the Bristol Plymouth thing, again, 326 million, are they insane? It's, we're not gonna let that happen, please. You, you've gotta, you've gotta dig your heels in on this. No compromise, no, no BS, just, just stop it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public input? If not?
Mr. Thibodeau. He changed his mind though, it wasn't your fault.
Which mic?
That mic's at the mic.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, good to meet you, Mike. Heard a lot about you.
Thank you. That, that January, when it comes to that voting there, is that the vote yes or no on whether we proceed with that project?
Yes.
It's really challenging, like people that work on Saturday, like I work Saturdays from 10 to 2, that's like legit hours.
Yeah, you won't even get, you won't, that's your exact, that's the exact voting time.
Yeah. But usually surprise, usually it runs a little later, it runs a little earlier. You sneak over there.
And there's no early voting?
Not that I've heard.
It's just the day of, that, no mail-in, nothing.
So, I still, yeah, like it's a day of, based on what is that, based on what is actually required by the statute. Yeah. Ah, yeah, the whole thing is not ideal in terms of the voting part. In terms of a lot, I'll just, I'll keep my comments to myself. I'm not supposed to have opinions.
I knew it was coming.
Nice.
I won't address that ridiculous comment.
Selectman Hull, the feeling you got from the other communities, how do you think they were going looking at that? Were they looking at that as like lower the value, or we don't want in?
There are, from the political side, there are many nuances, and it's a little difficult to answer that question for all of the towns. There are some towns who have members on their school committee that are alumni of that school. So their advocacy and their loyalties are questioned. There are some towns who can afford additional tax levy. Two towns in particular. There are one town in particular who has a select board, selectman, chairman, who was a BP grad, a major contributor, a major advocate of the school. Again, we question the loyalties to the taxpayer or to Bristol Plymouth. The one question that everyone asks, and this adds to how amazing the job that Bristol Aggie did. If Bristol Aggie could put together a school of six buildings and the amazing campus that they did for $101 million, how is it that Bristol Plymouth, their fee for the communities involved will equal $185 million? Why so much more? What makes it frustrating is the fact that there has been a real lack of dialogue between the school committee and the voters. And that frustration is shared by all of them, and it makes it difficult to sell it to the public. The other issue to go along with that is something we've been discussing. And many towns are concerned, that they feel that this vote is being shoved down our throats with certain limitations put in place. And that can be advantageous or a disadvantage depending on the political makeup of the town and the organization of the political groups in the town. So is it good planning? Absolutely not. Is there transparency? Absolutely not. And that's one of the reasons why every town is, is pushing back. Better communication. More accessibility for the public to vote.
Not to mention, this was already alluded to, the amount of capital expenditures coming up over the next five to seven years in this town.
Mayor O'Connor is appealing to the state to intervene in this issue.
And that's why we're sending a letter hoping that we can delay the actual election of this, to educate the public as to what's going on. This is a very short window, as you know. They originally, I think, they might have wanted January 8th, and was able to push it off to January.
Initially, it was proposed for December 11th.
Yeah.
December 11th?
Can you imagine?
Concern I think I would have is that you have the holidays coming up, you got people that travel, and that's gonna keep a lot of time out of that. People aren't gonna really have any time to study this. The heck did the holidays, that's right around the corner. We're not far out of that. And once you get through that, then all of a sudden, you get people thinking about, oh, you have February vacation coming up for kids, stuff like that, they're not gonna be involved. Take your time to read any of these, or say, oh, yeah, I can go there on a Saturday, you can do these hours, they go, whoa.
Four hours. You have four hours.
You're absolutely right. When you said that, I was like, at first I was like, did you just say what I think he said? Then you said it again, I was like, he did, I was like, wow.
You're like, I'm not gonna get to vote.
Like 7:00 AM to 4:00, 7:00 AM to 5:00.
Five, exactly.
8:00 to 5:00. It's never such a short window. On such a large expenditure too.
Correct. That has big impacts for, as you've alluded to, and we've discussed before, for a project that a lot, it seems like a lot of the municipalities weren't brought in the loop. Like, we didn't get any input, I didn't get to see plans, I didn't get to, like we did with the admin school, that's what I expected. I expected to have the same experience, having meetings. Which plans do we like? Which plans are possible based on your own capital plans in your own towns. So it was unfortunate that none of those discussions were had.
Selectman Hull?
Just a point of information. That will increase the tax rate per taxpayer family, $240 a year.
Whatever the bond is, 20, 30?
20, 25, whatever the bond.
I thought they talked 20.
20, that's norm, that's the normal bond.
Year or two is a lot less, but then you get hit with the $241 a year.
The taxes, that's how it's structured, they have to pay annually, they go already, it's not like, I mean, look at the schools we have here. How much is the expenditure they had to redo the roofs on these schools?
Correct.
And they build them aside, you talk, that's gonna be a beast, they would build them for that kind of money.
Don't forget that. It took time to build consensus for that roof, for a roof, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's, we have to be realistic about what's down the pipeline and what we've planned for as a board and as a town.
Even tonight, when the assessors were here, I don't think people realized how much the taxes over 300 in a board district, I thought it would be a a thousand, that's a huge increase.
And the board has had questions about that process.
The thing that bothers me, and I think I brought to you an attention before, with the boards, is there's a lot of people I know that, when I was a little kid, they were hoping they were in their 80s and 90s now living in town, second generation today. It's really sad, and you talk to them, they're trying to figure out how they keep paying taxes, they have too much pride to go and ask someone for monies.
But they, there is that senior work-off program that we might.
Talk about. There's a senior work program, which is not encouraged, but we presently give, it's like $742 for those that are eligible, an abatement on their taxes. We're planning on, I think the board, we've discussed this in the past, of bringing it before the annual town meeting, increasing it to $1,000. You have to be eligible, have the certain amount of income, house doesn't count as an asset. So it will help some seniors.
Be well.
No, that's what I suggested, the gentleman.
Oh, 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 okay.
And speaking to, like, I raised recently in a supermarket, and I was discussing.
I understand the pride. They've, they've been, they've not had to ask for assistance of any kind all their lives. I'm, I'm empathetic to that, but I, we need to have people know that we want people to stay in Dayton, right? You've lived here all your life, you raised your kids, your kids raised their kids in Dayton, we want you to be here. We should try to make it as easy as possible for folks to stay in town and in their homes if that's what they want.
Okay, so over the years, what they tell you about, I mean, I remember when I was a kid, I used to go here and do this and that, they'd drive home, I was like, oh, wow. I remember talking about that area, this, I'm sure you guys are the same.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We've, the board's always been concerned about those that run fixed income, and hoping, see what we can do to help them to remain in, in town, that's why we're, I think we're all, consider all of us fiscally responsible.
My neighbor was here, Bill Mariano, he has a property that is, I guess it's been in front of the finance committee, but they said.
Assessors. Assessors, yes.
Couple of committees he had, we can call away, this is one of his guys, called up. I don't know if you had any decisions on that.
I think we were waiting for all the, there was three committees that, or three boards we had to wait for, and there was a third one. I don't know if it was the conservation, we need conservation, the assessor's office. And planning.
Some planning.
Planning, boy, yeah, like, so I do.
Just waiting on conservation.
Yeah, there was two, because I had mentioned that we would talk about it this, at this meeting, but we didn't get that third, and I think there were meeting after today.
That'll come up at a future.
Hopefully on the 29th.
So, yeah, the, so at the, at the board's December 29th meeting, that'll be on the agenda, because the conservation is meeting tomorrow night, so we'll have their answer, so we'll have their answer after that, so like, we'll be able to bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen on the 29th.
That's the next time.
Yeah, three weeks from today. Did you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, just, if I could ask your indulgence, please.
Like that.
You said $240, is, is it quarterly, Mr. Hull? Annually?
It'll be $60 a quarter.
But those numbers don't seem to jive. I'm just doing some math quickly in my head, and that, it doesn't seem to add up to our town's share, but even still, would that nominal fee fall off at the end of the bond period, or would it keep going? After all, you know that we are paying a temporary tax on the telephone bill to fund the Spanish-American War, and that's still there, so.
Is that war over?
I, I thought so.
So my understanding is, it's about how the, how it's presented. Is it a prop two and a half override, which, it's not, my understanding. Is it a debt exclusion, which does have a term limit? It stops after this period?
Ah, so the only, ah, so the only thing it is at the, the only thing at this point to, the only thing it is at this point, like, is like an up or down yes or no question. We're actually meeting with our financial advisors next week, and hoping, I'm hoping actually that they'll come to the December 29th meeting or the January 12th meeting, so we could talk about that exactly.
But that conversation only, I think this is what you're getting at. That conversation only happens if there's a yes vote overall.
Yes.
And the project has to proceed whether Dayton has voted in the affirmative or not overall, correct?
That is.
It's not only Dayton though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like if a pass, like if a passes in the, if it passes in the affirmative, if passes in the affirmative, even if Dayton votes no.
Yes.
Are the project, even if Dayton votes no, the projects, the project itself, the project itself has an opportunity to pass.
Okay, but to answer Mr. Galucci's question, that's a congress, debt exclusion with a definite, okay, it's gonna be 10 or 20 years. It goes back to normal after that, or prop two and a half override, which I think is in perpetuity?
Yeah, yeah, like in perpetu, yeah, like in perpetuity, but on, so what's something that will have like a 30-year debt service as in, oh, an example, as an example, that's really like a debt exclusion rather than a prop two and a half override would come into play.
Agreed.
So, Ms. Brady, have we formally invited Edutra, our BP representative, to come to our meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
We haven't heard that.
There's been no response?
Thank you.
The first response was you would like his whole committee to come with him.
That's gonna be, there's a lot of people on that though.
Yeah, that's, that's what he said. So then we, we extended the invitation to him to invite his whole committee, but we haven't heard a response yet.
Should we just make an attempt at that again and send another request in December 29th meeting? Because we may not get that, may not get a delay for the January 29th election. It's important that the public know as, have as much information as possible to make a proper judgment on this, because this is really gonna impact the town. As we know, there's a lot of projects coming down the road, and we're kind of preparing for that, putting money into stabilization and stuff like that, but this is gonna, we won't be able to, our projects, if this happens, would be. Selectman Hull?
One of the things that was discussed at the meeting in Taunton City Hall, in an area where there was no agreement, and I know one town is going to put not just the vote for approval or disapproval, but they're also going to put a debt exclusion vote on the ballot.
Same one, okay.
So they would vote for or against the project, and a debt exclusion. Now, what happens, I had this discussion with the Board of Selectmen of this town, and if they vote for, or if the district votes, even though the town may vote against it, then the townspeople will decide whether it be a debt exclusion, or it will have to come out of the operating budget, which would be catastrophic. And there would be consequences. So I don't know how Dayton should proceed on that, whether it should be just a vote on pass of, or accept or reject, or if it should be that plus. Do we do a debt exclusion at that time?
Yeah, I personally feel that we should vote an up or down. Obviously, I'm hoping the town votes it down. But I think the debt exclusion, we may not have to have that vote.
Okay.
Especially if it's, fortunately if it's defeated, so.
So my understanding too, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, my understanding too, and I don't know the timing, we would have to defer to the town clerk, but it's possible that if it does pass, meaning in the district, we may be able to add a question to the ballot on the annual town election in April, rather than, I'm not su, again, you're looking at me. I feel like you're judging me, I'm sorry. But I don't know the timing, but we may not have to have, because I think this is your concern and probably Rehoboth's concern as well, having an extra, because it costs money
Right.
to do these things, these aren't free. We could avoid that by, based on the timing, if it works out, putting it on the annual town election ballot.
Mr. Jefferson has a question.
Hey, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I'm sure folks are aware of it, and I think Lenny, you may know, because there in a regional district, there are two methods that a district can, you know, get capital projects pushed through, and I believe in this case, the BP district's elected to do majority district-wide election, which means, let's say there's 10,000 voters across whatever town's a part of BP, you know, a 5,000 and one vote yes, it passes, and the other option that could have been done is if there's 10 towns in the district and five or six of them vote yes and four vote no, then it would have failed. Obviously, there must have been some discussion, there's some BP school committee meeting on which, and why they went, the different reasons, but the. But the thing for people to be aware of is kind of if only, you know, 10 people come out from Dayton and vote and it fails, it's really power numbers in the situation in this case, if they're doing a district-wide vote. So I don't know, Lenny, if you knew, that was what I heard as well. They're doing district-wide voting, right?
Yes. So it's the total. It doesn't matter where, what town or municipality the voter comes from.
Correct.
So it's a sum of all communities for yes or no.
Correct. Mr. Jefferson, what I did wanna tell you was that you had alluded to, you didn't know how that decision was made. And what I would respond to you with is, there are no coincidences in this business.
Okay, moving on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know that. I was just saying that.
I know.
Like you said, there's a reason why they, it was done.
So we're gonna be going into executive session. We will not be returning to an open meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Do you declare?
Declare.
Okay.
You always make fun of me when I say that.
No, you're supposed to though. Negotiations with Dayton Police Officers Mascot Local 306 and also Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid and requirements. And in this particular case, it's for executive session minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of December 1st, 2021.
Second. Wanna call for a vote? Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
Campachico? Wanna wish everybody happy holidays?